Welcome to the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers, and anyone desiring to speak or speaker request forms back there also. So, I will ask for a moment of silent reflection, and Lloyd will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner LaCroix. Review and approve the agenda. We do need to add an item on this. Holly Hennies, please.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hennies, Commission Manager. Today, I would like to ask the Board to add approval of an additional voucher in the amount of forty-one hundred dollars for a right-of-way acquisition. And we also need to add an executive session at the end. The Board was not scheduled to go in for contractual impending litigation, but we need to do so now.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve adding the additional voucher and the executive session.
Second. Got a motion and a second for the discussion. All those in favor in the cap of saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Consent agenda, Holly Hennies.
Okay, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Item is being removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November fifth, two thousand and twenty. Approval of the resolution to discharge county aid liens with no activity for thirty years, as submitted by the auditor. Number seven is approval of the warrant of appointment for Highway Superintendent Joseph Miller. And finally, number eight is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of October two thousand and twenty twenty from Human Resources and Fire Administration.
Is there anyone from the public that desires to have any of these items removed from the consent calendar? Any Commissioners that desire to have these removed?
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes.
I would remove number six.
So, we have items five, seven, and eight on the consent calendar. We've removed number six.
So moved to approve five, seven, and eight.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Ross Connect and a second from Commissioner LaCroix. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item six, Commissioner.
Mr. Vice Chair, I just wanted to point out the total of the total write-offs for the public's knowledge is one million fourteen thousand nine hundred and forty dollars and eighty-seven cents in lien write-offs that have been enacted for the past thirty years.
Okay, thank you.
That's all. I would move to approve.
Got a motion from Commissioner DeSanto, a second from Commissioner Ross Connect. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Ends our consent calendar. First item, number nine, under our regular agenda items. I'd like to welcome Mr. Bob Wilcox, the Executive Director for the South Dakota Counties Association, to come forward. Bob has some information for us, and just as a preliminary introduction, I've known Bob for probably most of his life, known his family, his wife's family, and so we appreciate you coming out and appearing before us, Bob.
Well, thank you, Chairman. Drews, I appreciate the offer to, or the invite to come out and visit with you folks, and certainly would very much welcome a return visit during this legislative session. I'd like to just bring you briefly up to speed on a couple of things that are going, that are happening inside that office at Beck and Pier. Obviously, I'm on a, again, there's only myself and Chris Jacobson, Deputy Director, that run South Dakota County Commissioners Association, and then, of course, are under contract with Sutton to administer the daily requirements for the South Dakota County officials, and that is on a contract basis. That being said, it seems like there's not a lot of dust that settles around our desks anymore because we're either, one of us is headed east and the other one's headed west. We believe in membership visits, and so I really do appreciate the invite out here. I'd like to give you a couple, very briefly, an update of what's going so far where the South Dakota County Commissioners Association is, as far as our legislative portfolio is starting to come together. As you may recall, at the annual conference in Sioux Falls, that South Dakota Commissioners Association did pass two resolutions that will be introduced in this two thousand and twenty legislative session. The one is they're help find funding for the Veteran Cemetery that is going to be built in Minnehaha County, just north of Sioux Falls. They're looking for funds to upgrade what is today, for the part of it is a gravel road, county road, and then the rest of the way into the proposed site of the cemetery is going to have to be a complete rebuild. So, they're trying to secure funding from the state legislature to actually put in a road that is adequate to take the traffic count that apparently that facility will encounter once it's up and running. That is a resolution that we are supporting. We're, again, looking for statewide support on that, and that's why we're going through the legislative process. The second one is coming out of the northeast South Dakota District of Counties, and that has, is in regards to flooded land and abating the taxes on the land that has been engulfed by early overflows of water, excess moisture, excess snowpack, whatever leads made the issue occur. They are looking at trying to give some tax relievers, relief to the private owners. Now, we have seen that over the years that I've been there before come forward. It's somewhat difficult lift back then. I don't know if it'll be met with that kind of, that kind of a bridge to get across, or if, in fact, the whole thing has changed where we maybe think it is reasonable to obey. So, we will be watching that. We, in December at our board meeting, I'm going to ask our Board of Directors to give me clear, very clear, direction on this one, because it will get emotional. They have done it in the past where it does, be water and people and flooding, there's a perfect storm lining up, and people do, and there's nothing wrong with that, nothing at all. You know, and it's their home, and they, you know, it's, they're a priority to have those feelings for that. So, again, I want to be very clear, and I, as our team of the works the capital, that we all are certainly on the same page. I'd also want to introduce a couple of the funds, funds that I do know Pennington County does participate in, that we administer out of our office. And by that, I mean, well, I'm going to use court-ordered competency tests. Those are a new program that we are administering that came out, we're in our second year of that. Pennington County has been using that, and what those are, it's coming, if you haven't heard of this, it is whether someone that is incarcerated in Pennington County is possibly facing court, they have, and there might be a question, are they competent to understand the charges that have been brought against them? This is when, again, we end up doing testing on them. And when I was sitting in your chair many years ago, the only place it would doom would be down in Yankton at the State Hospital, and they still are doing them today. But we are able now, working with the Department of Social Services, when this thing was crafted, and this was, this took place under Governor Dugard's watch, this program, we are now having more availability. We have a doctor out here that, his name might be familiar for some of you, but Dr. Manlove, he does quite a few for you folks. And so, anyway, at the end of the day, we have a fifteen-hundred-dollar cap on the test. That's what we put on ourselves and put it into statute, because some of these guys, some of these tests were running up to three to four to five thousand dollars per test. And so, that, that we could not handle. Now, the funding for this is a pass-through from the Department of Social Services into our office. I request the amount of money that we need, and then that's where I send my request to is Social Services. Then they send the money to us, and we administer the program. It's been working very, very good, and it's, actually, we have been able to write checks back to you folks, the counties, for your expenses that you put out upfront, and then I, the association reimburses you through this program. So, I'm, hopefully, it will continue to work. It's working very well. I don't see why it won't continue, but that being said, you know, as we know, things can, they come easy, and sometimes they go away faster than that. So, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think I could stand, stand by for a couple of questions, if you'd like, or, but, again, I'll probably be back out in December after I get cure, my direct direction on which way I've been told how to handle the issues. So, I thank, again, thank you for inviting me out. Holly, thank you for kind of facilitating this, so really, truly appreciate it.
So, Bob, one quick question. Are you capped on those dollars that you can apply for from Social Services? Is there a cap on it?
No, there is not a cap at this time, and actually, it's, it's been somewhat quiet. And so, I haven't, I haven't requested money at all for two thousand and twenty yet, because I'm still, we still, in the bank, have a surplus. But, you know, again, it's, it could change tomorrow.
Sure.
You know, but, no, we are not capped.
Okay. Questions from the Commission. Commissioner DeSanto.
Bob, is that, is that pretty typical, that there's very few applications for that?
For the court-ordered?
Yeah, for the court-ordered.
It seems to me it's somewhat geographically, you, different areas. I see very few out of central South Dakota. I see, you know, obviously, you folks and Minnehaha, you know, your population base, it makes sense.
Okay.
But I don't see, I, I get some off of our counties that are on reservation, attached with the reservation issues, and we do see some of those, but the two, obviously, the two big ones are Minnehaha and Pennington.
What would you say the average number per year is?
You know, I was, Commissioner, if I can, I can't pull that number off the top of my head, but I can certainly get to it and give you one. I'd be afraid to jump at, and I would say probably, I'm just, I'm going to throw it out there anyway, so I just will say it. I think you guys have probably had, and you're, you're doing about six to eight requests.
Okay.
Thank you.
And if, I'll double-check, and if I'm way off, if I really hit the home run, then I'll just say I was right on, otherwise, I was off. Any other questions?
Thanks for the update, Bob, and.
Pardon me?
Thanks for the update.
Oh, well, it was short and sweet. I know you've got a lot going on, and, and I'm supposed to have, be in another meeting at one in Pier, so I think I'll probably turn around and get going.
Well, safe travels.
Well, I thank you very much, and again, thank you for asking.
Commissioner LaCroix.
Bob, I just want to express my appreciation for what you guys do, and, you know, Chris has been to all our regional meetings, and I had one question, I'm kind of curious to how some of these other meetings are, regional meetings are happening quarterly meetings. I know you guys make every one, and I know for us, the Black Hills region, we've been, you know, instead of going to every other county, our facility is the safest place to have them, and so we've been doing Zoom and have this. Are some of these other areas doing the same?
I would say yes. There's been some going, obviously going Zoom, and that's what I see is the change. I think in, as far as distancing in the audience, like you're doing here, I'm sure is also being done, and this is a wonderful facility, and it works perfect for you and under the circumstances that we are dealing with today. We are, what's, and this is off-topic, Mr. Chair, if I may drift just a touch, and you know I drift.
Absolutely.
You know, I'm visiting with some of our local legislators in District Twenty-four. It's, how are we going to have a session is kind of what the question is, and, you know, because how are we going to have a legislative session? And nobody really has that silver bullet yet, and I'm anxious to see what, what they draft and craft out will be the rules and how it will be handled, because, you know, South Dakota, as we all know, you look at the news in the morning, we still are going kind of the wrong way on this deal, and, and we've got to figure out a way to maybe get it turned around or slowed down, one of the two, so that's.
So, I'm also curious about that, because a lot of the research information that's provided to legislators comes from lobbyists of various groups. I'm curious as to how lobbyists are even going to be able to do their work under these circumstances, so.
Yeah, and we just don't have an answer yet, and I'm not sure how it's going to shake out. I really am not, and I, we have some good connections into the legislature. Well, soon if we, if we even hear a rumor, we'll let you know.
Okay. Any other questions relative to that, for Bob? Bob, we appreciate you coming out. Thank you much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for taking your time. Look forward to seeing you in December.
Yep, and likewise. Happy holidays to everyone.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Cindy, from the Auditor's Office, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Mueller, Pennington County Auditor. The first item that I have is for a transfer of retail on sale Mount Beverage and South Dakota Farm License from Whispering Pines Cottages to Black Elk Resort. We would ask approval for that transfer.
Move for approval. Second. Got a motion from Commissioner LaCroix, a second from Commissioner Ross Connect for approval for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B.
The second item that we have is the application of the current pay policy and some of the inequities that might happen if the Board does not act on this, because we've changed not only going from monthly, and then we changed pay policies, and now we're changing pay policies again. And so, it caused an issue where people who had an anniversary date from December first through December thirteenth could potentially get a third annual step and performance and/or performance. I won't say they always get performance, but that could happen. And so, we were trying to make this so that it would not be applied to any employee more than twice, since the policy was in place for two years. Makes sense?
Made sense to me when I looked at it.
Yeah. Any other questions to Cindy?
I move for approval.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Ross Connect.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner DeSanto. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is, we have Dustin Willett, Emergency Management.
Morning, Mr. Vice Chair, Members of the Commission. Dustin Willett, Pennington County Emergency Manager. Somewhat interesting to come up and present updates when, when it is so prevalent in all of the media releases and media reports and headlines. There's not much I can tell you that isn't already being screened from mountaintops. You know, in our weekly conversations with Monument Health, and for what they're worth, the, the different ensemble projections, you know, the, the thirteen different models that the CDC ensembles together and looks for the statistical average, and again, the epidemiologists at Monument, we were all hopeful, I think is probably the best word, for a peak of our current trend in mid-November. And certainly, one day does not a trend make by any stretch of the imagination, as we've seen those numbers vary considerably from day to day. But, you know, our numbers yesterday were, were, in Pennington County, we dropped down below two thousand active cases again, so it'll be interesting to see what the numbers come today, tomorrow, the next day, and see what type of trend line develops, our trend line. Seven-day rolling average has been alarming for the last several weeks, maybe not unexpected, but certainly alarming, and that, that seven-day rolling trend line is, is changing its direction a little bit with, with the current numbers that we're seeing. And again, there was some expectation with the models that we would see that start to happen, and so it's encouraging that we, we see that start to happen. But again, one day does not make a trend, so we'll have to see how that plays out. I think probably the most significant news COVID-related for our community is the mass testing event, the free, open-to-the-public, drive-through, self-administered mass testing event that will take place at the fairgrounds this Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. So, hopefully, the media blitz is working. Hopefully, people are able to find and access the information about that. Just as a very, very brief overview, you, you don't end up getting out of your car. You do have to pre-register. There's a website through the South Dakota Department of Health where you pre-register and print off your voucher. You have to bring that voucher with you to the testing site. It has the location and the time, so if you follow the time that's on your voucher, that, that really, really helps the logistics and the throughput of those vehicles at the, at the fairgrounds. So, so, again, free, open to the public, you do have to pre-register. The swab is a self-administered nasal swab. It's not the one where you tickle the back of your brain. You just go, you know, midway up the nasal passage on either side and twirl it around and let it sit for a little bit, but it's a self-administered nasal swab that you get the, the results. They're saying about five days is what their, their expected turnaround is, three to five days. If you don't hear your results, that, that initial website that you registered on, you can go and check the results as well. So, couple of things. One, there's certainly people in the community that have wanted this type of, of testing brought to the community, so, so hopefully, they take advantage of that. Two, with a concerted effort over four days to mass test people in the community, when those results come in, that's certainly going to impact the numbers that we're looking at. This is a, a different testing regime than we have, have had in our community. So, again, I would look for an influx of, of numbers. If we, if we test thousands of people, then, then percentage-wise, we're probably going to see an increase in, in numbers in what our, our active cases are in Pennington County. So, understand that these types of testing events are certainly going to have an impact on, on what those graphs and numbers look like. But again, as we've said from day one, we're looking at snapshots in time. The thing that goes hand-in-hand with testing and has since day one is contact tracing, and contact tracing, South Dakota really is leveraging quite a few resources and, and engaging quite a few partners in contact tracing. The, you know, they, they are really leaning on school districts, they've, they've been partnered with the National Guard, they've brought on numerous additional staff. In fact, there's only a handful of states in the, in the Union that have met the recommendation for the number of contact tracers per population, per capita. And South Dakota is one of those handful of states that, that according to the recommendations has the number of contact tracers that, that we're supposed to have to try to do this. That being said, contact tracing is still probably one of the Achilles' heels of, of our current testing regime in the state, and it's, it's, there's just a lot of work, a lot of time and effort that goes into that contact tracing, and it's still probably not as timely as it, as it needs to be. Ultimately, what that means is testing is great, and, and people want to get tested, can get tested, and they can get those results, but one of the caveats that's always pushed out with testing, and that hand-in-hand with some of the delays in contact tracing, is, is if you have reason to believe that you are ill, you know, don't carry on with your normal public engagement and, and, and normal work activities, waiting for a result or waiting to be contacted. If, if, you know, our governor has, has consistently said that, that she is relying on, on the citizens to do what's right and take responsibility for, for themselves and their actions, and so, again, testing is fantastic, but if you have reason to believe that, that you've been exposed, if you have reason to believe that you're infected, make, make the appropriate decisions. The guidance is not ambiguous. The guidance is out there, the guidance is clear, and so I would just ask that we follow it. The last thing I'll, I'll leave there, that I've said every time that I'm up here, is, is know that the, the concern is for our healthcare system. There are over a hundred cases now at Monument in Rapid City in patients, so we've seen higher numbers of hospitalized COVID patients than we have ever seen. That continues to be a concern, that continues to strain our healthcare system, and as has been widely publicized at this point, it's not necessarily a physical space issue, it's a staffing issue. It's having the right healthcare providers and the right ratios to take good care of patients, and it's not just COVID, it's, it's taking care of all the patients that Monument Health services. So, please keep in mind that our healthcare system is still stressed, it is still being impacted, and if, if our trend begins to, to taper down the other side, that we're all hoping it does, remember that the hospital continues to be impacted for another week or two from our, our upward trend that we've been experiencing. So, even if our daily case, cases begin to trend downward, Monument will still be impacted for a couple of weeks as, as those cases present to the hospital. So, do what you can, it's in our community, we expect it to be in our community, we know it's in our community, just do whatever you can to give Monument a break so that we can continue to provide the healthcare that we need to our citizens. That's what I've got. I'd be happy to stand for questions.
Dustin, you, you might explain this a little bit further. I know that in the, initially, there's several monument systems throughout the Black Hills, but I think they had prepared Monument and Rapid City to handle the COVID cases. If I, if I'm mistaken on that, explain that to me.
So, that was certainly the, the, the early and initial plan, and still a predominant number of COVID cases end up at, at the Rapid City campus of Monument Health, but we see COVID cases now throughout several of the Monument facilities, and it's simply, again, due to capacity and staffing. Monument has a very robust system in place to, to balance their patient loads versus what they have for caregivers and space, and we're at a point now where I think, at least last time I looked, I did not look today, but the last time I, I looked at that, there were, there were COVID patients in multiple Monument facilities, West River. Obviously, the predominant, the highest numbers, the highest concentration, and the normal way to handle those patients is to have them at the Rapid City campus.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
What's the population of South Dakota?
Uh, where are we at? About eight-hundred thousand-ish?
So, nine-hundred thousand, no, I've kind of heard that we want to try to keep that under one percent. Does that number make sense? Active COVID cases under nine percent, or, I mean, one percent?
So, the question would be keeping it under, and, and what are we doing to actively manage the cases and keep them under? I think everybody would want them to be as low as possible, and we hope that they're as low as possible, but I haven't heard of any quantifiable specific number that has any association with a decision-action point. You know, if we hit this number, we're going to do this legislatively, or we're going to, I, I haven't seen a percentage or a number linked to any actions.
How many active cases are there in South Dakota?
Uh, I want to say, I'm going to pull this out of, I honestly don't know.
Okay.
I wanted to say eighteen thousand, but it might be more.
I can do the math, eighteen thousand and nine-hundred, so I'm just, I'm just looking at the big, looking at the big picture there, so.
Yeah, it's, 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 so, you know, we look at, at all those numbers across all the, all the states, all the regions, and the Midwest is, is alarming in terms of how many cases happen so fast, and, and the graphs are, the graphs are what the graphs are, data is what data is, and as long as people are looking at the data and understanding the cau- And as long as people are looking at the data and understanding the caveats, understanding what it really says and, and, and what it, what it can't say or what it doesn't say. Unfortunately, we see, and it is what it is. We're, we're never going to get away from this. But we see people's individual thoughts, beliefs, politics influence how they interpret and use data. And we see that not just with COVID. We see that with everything and every issue. It's, it's challenging for people to be purely objective with the data that's presented them and to truly understand the limitations of the data that's presented them. So again, I've been pretty steadfast on looking at Monument Health, Avera and Sanford as well. And those are the numbers that, that, that I followed, and those are the numbers that quite frankly are still concerning to me.
So I know some of them are trying to do a measurement of how many are hospitalized. And I might point out that that only, not only includes population of South Dakota, but Monument covers an area of Nebraska, an area of Wyoming. Same way with the Sioux Falls facilities. They cover parts of Iowa and Minnesota, and there's two. So hospitalizations don't give you a, a true figure of what we're talking about as far as South Dakotans actually being hospitalized from time to time, so.
That's accurate.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Commissioner LaCroix.
Go ahead.
Dustin, I, I was just going to ask about some clarification for this testing because I haven't got on the website to look. But with this free testing, are the people, when they go through the, the signup form, are they asking if they're asymptomatic, stuff like that? Or are people just want to be tested, going to be tested? And with these tests, is it going to tell them they've had it already or not?
So no, this isn't a, an antibody test. This is an active virus test. So if you have had it in the past, this is not going to tell you you've had it in the past. This is going to tell you if you have an active infection.
No. Okay. Thanks.
Lloyd just asked, answered one of my questions. And I guess the second question I would have is, is the number of ventilations and deaths up as well? Or is it, are we kind of low on the ventilation and deaths? From what I understand, we're, we're down kind of on the ventilations and deaths in comparison to the number of people that are infected.
It, it depends on, on which apples and oranges you want to compare to each other. So if we compare ventilator and, and, and death rates to what Washington State or New York City saw at the beginning of this pandemic, then obviously, we look fantastic and stellar. I mean, there, there was, ultimately, what it comes down to is one, a game of numbers. We have more people in the hospital, more people in the ICUs, more people on ventilators now than we ever have simply because we have more people with, with an infection. When you start looking at percentages, and this is a, a conversation that comes up pretty much every week with Monument, and, and they've been very, very transparent in, in their answers. It, it's not all doom and gloom. The medical community is learning how to, to treat and care for COVID patients better and better and better. And there are more approved therapies coming online all the time. So the, the chances of you ending up on a ventilator or having a poor outcome are certainly less now than they were at the beginning of the pandemic. Our hospitals are doing a better job of treating people. So when you look at the total number of patients that Monument is, is treating versus maybe what a New York hospital looked like months ago, are, you know, yes, that we have a very small percentage that need the level of care in the ICU and need a ventilator compared to the total number of people hospitalized.
Thank you.
That answers the question.
That does. Yeah.
One more question. Has, has anybody been infected and then come out of it and then got, and then went and then got re-infected again? Has that happened at all?
They think so. Again, we, we know, what we know is, is a heck of a lot less than what we don't know. There appear to be cases of reinfection, but because some of the initial data from their initial infections don't necessarily have the, the, the level of granularity in their testing. Basically, to really know, we get down into strains and what one looks like genetically versus what another one looks like genetically. And so the question becomes, did they test positive with one strain, recover from that strain, and get re-infected with a different strain or the same strain? And there's huge holes in that data, and it doesn't happen a lot, so the cases are very, very few and far between. So we have a very, very, very small sample size of people that would potentially fall into that category. And with that very, very small number, we don't have really good complete data on what that looks like. So it appears that there have been a few individuals that have been re-infected. But other than that, there is, there, there, there really isn't any hard data about, yes, it always happens. Yes, it can happen. Yes, it's going to happen this many days after. I mean, none of that exists.
Other questions for Dustin? Thank you, Dustin. Appreciate the update.
Thank you, Dustin.
Item 12, Shannon Rittenberger, Items from Equalization.
Been a long time, Shannon. Good to see you.
Good morning, Shannon Rittenberger, Director of Equalization. And I am here with some abatement requests. And I want to point out that the, the abatement request comes from the property owner, but will come with my recommendation. The property owner is Kathy Beach. This is a property in Wall. I think it was a commercial property, land and building, and right after purchase, the building was removed. But we never knew about it, so the building remained on the tax roll for all of these years. And a, a building that doesn't exist is one of the reasons that an abatement could be granted. The commission has the option of granting the abatement. And there's actually one, two, three, four requests for those four years. And there'll be another one for this year after January.
I would move to approve.
Thank you.
Got a motion from Commissioner DeSanto or second from Commissioner LaCroix?
I just got one question.
Go ahead.
What would the process be for them? When they tore the building down, did they have to get a demolition report? And that demolition report would have went to your office? Is that the way that would work? Because they just did the same thing in Hill City. They tore a building down last week, an old building downtown. So I assume there was a process because I know they had to go through the city to get the demo permit. But then would that go to your office?
Yes. It's a, a building permit to tear down a building. The only purpose that I know of that is, is to, to notify us because I don't think planning and zoning really cares. May, maybe not. Hill City, especially where there's historic buildings. But we do get that like any other building permit. I don't know if Wall has a demo permit or not. We didn't get it. Phone call would have been nice. Nobody calls the county assessor.
I would think after two years, they'd, they'd, they'd see their assessment and they would have caught it earlier.
And that's something I brought up to the property owner. Four years of assessment notices and tax bills. There's a reason why we mail a notice.
No questions here.
Shannon, I take it that the 6,200 is total for the four years. It's not each year?
You're correct. Looking at each year, 800, 1,600, 1,800, 1,500. Yeah, so that 6,000 is total for the four years.
Okay. And we will, next year, we'll have a fifth year of it.
Yeah. The, the reason we don't do that is, is we don't have a tax bill to abate yet for that year.
Okay, okay. So I have a motion in a second. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Shannon. Joe Miller, Highway Department.
Don't be such a stranger, Shannon.
Good morning, Commissioner. Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Superintendent. First up here is, we have Sean as part of their agreement with the county to give a presentation on their bridge findings for their inspections that they have done in 2020. So with, with that, I'll let Sean come up and, and do his presentation.
Very good. Welcome, Sean.
Good morning, Commissioner. Sean Mayfield, KLG Engineering here in Rapid City.
Morning.
We have completed our 2020 inspections, so I have a short PowerPoint here just to give an overview of our findings and just gather any questions that you have, so.
Very good. Thank you.
We inspected 59 bridges this year. Fifty of those bridges had no changes identified, and all were in good to fair condition. So overall, very good. Five bridges had a noted change or something that we documented. Two of those bridges had just deterioration concerns. And three of those bridges, three of those five bridges had reduced load limits. And those load, load limits were given to the, the highway department to, to post for those bridges.
So Sean, can I stop you right there? So when you find one that you believe needs to be reduced on load limits, you do that immediately with the highway department, notifying them?
We, we, if it is something of immediate concern, yes, that, that goes to. If it is a deterioration, we, we may present that stuff to Joe and then they, they take it from there, essentially.
Right. I believe it's in state statute. We have, I believe it's 30 or 60 days. I believe it's 30 days to get any bridges that, due to inspections, have load limits. We have 30 days to get those posted. But say like Nemo Road that they found or High Seega, they contacted us right away and we, we made the arrangements to get those lane closures done, so.
Yeah, thank you. Just out of curiosity, where is this bridge located at?
That is by High Seega, by High Seega Lodge.
Okay.
Moving on, there were four bridges that were a critical find. Essentially, a critical find is an item that needs immediate attention, such as lane closures or something that's identified that contributes to the load carrying capacity of the bridge. So as I noted, 50 of the bridges, the general results were no changes. This is an example. 160 at the avenue, Bridge 601, 400, very good condition. This is just south of New Underwood. Noted changes, this bridge, 308, 298, is on Norris Peak Road. It's actually right at the church intersection on Highway 44. That had a concrete patch that was noted that had, has opened up. Telling us there's some movement there. We want to make sure that that patch is, is closed up so that no moisture can get into it and essentially cause more deterioration to the bridge. Next bridge with a noted change is Net Yoke Road. This would be just south of Brick Town Gardens, Bridge 395, 367. As you can see, some of the bottom of one of the beams has, has spalled away as spalls when concrete essentially breaks away from the, the supporting element. And you can see there's items of cracking as well in, in that beam. So that's a noted change. That's something that we note in our inspection such that we keep an eye on it and make measurements of that to make sure it doesn't get worse over time.
I got a question here. If you look at that picture and then you look at what happened to the bridge on Nemo Road, wouldn't it be about where those arrows are is where that, where that piece of concrete broke away? And that whole double T fell down in the Box Elder Creek?
The, I, I, I will have a showing of that bridge on Nemo Road. But yes, it actually, as it gets closer to the, the support is where the one on Nemo Road was, yes.
So Sean, any idea of the age of that particular bridge right there off the top of your head?
That would be 1973, I believe.
Okay.
Typically, these, these are called double T girder bridges. They were used after the 1972 flood. There, there are a number of those up in the hills of this type of structure. This bridge, similar double T girder bridge on old Hill City Road just to the west of Keystone, Bridge 312, 433. As you can see, there, a big portion of that concrete beam has fallen away and it's exposed the reinforcing. So this one has a load reduction on it because of this issue. There are seven beams on this bridge. Six of the beams are in good shape. It was just this one that has the, the noted deficiency on it. Again, a reduced, reduced load limit, Thunderhill, Thunderhead Falls Road. This would be the second bridge in on Thunderhead Falls Road, 317, 313. As you can see, that beam has showing signs of cracking with efflorescence. Essentially, the, the salt is starting to eat through the beam. And we actually put this one on a 12-month inspection cycle. Generally, it's a 24-month, but just to keep an eye on it to make sure that things don't continue to deteriorate at a fast, rapid rate. Another reduced load limit, 159th Avenue. This is just west of New Underwood, Bridge 592, 91. As you can see, the supporting timber piling has deteriorated, decayed. And with that, it reduces the load carrying capacity of the bridge. I will move on to critical findings. As I had mentioned, this is the bridge on Nemo Road that we had discussed, Bridge 306, 261. It was a beam failure, and with that, the bridge has since been repaired. Eight, eight new beams were replaced on this bridge.
I was at safety assume, but from what I heard, you're not going to put an asphalt overlay on that because we're thinking that that asphalt overlay encapsulates the salt and, and accelerates the deterioration of the concrete double Ts?
That is correct. There, it's actually twofold. It's, it, it houses that salt, plus it adds additional load to the, on the beam. To, there was about four inches of asphalt on that beam. And just doing a square footage measurement of it, approximately three to four tons of asphalt on one beam. So it does make a difference just having that material on there.
Okay. Wow. So to put that in perspective, when we go out to the parking garage, we're looking at double Ts?
Those are a different type of double Ts, but you are correct.
But you're essentially looking at those. And so if we parked under there and we saw that deterioration, we'd probably be a little concerned.
Yeah, that, that's when you want to have regular maintenance and make sure that, that salt. Do everything you can to keep salt away from bridges. It's the number one. Sorry to say that, Joe, but that's, salt, salt deteriorates bridges. It really does. Next finding was on Nemo Road as well. This is Bridge 321, 266. It's right at the intersection of Norris Peak Road. It had a hole that was discovered in one of the beams right at the end of the bridge. And that bridge was repaired as part of this year's bridge improvement projects as well. Next bridge on Nemo Road, Bridge 313, 265. I'm pointing to the end of one of the, the double T girders underneath the, the north abutment. And that beam has sheared off the end of it such that there is very little support left that it was setting on the abutment. So this was a critical finding I, I contacted Joe about. It was reduced to one lane to get traffic away from this girder that has the issue that you see there. And I believe this one's being repaired as well. Okay. And the final bridge is on High Seega Road, right as you're entering the loop going to High Seega Lodge. This, this bridge had advanced spalling or concrete breaking away from the, the bottom of the beam. You can see the exposed reinforcing there that's starting to rust and efflorescence with even stalactites there from the, from the salt. So that was reduced to one lane. There's the both out exterior girders and then one, the next girder in from that were all three fairly poor shape. So that's why tra, traffic was directed into the center of the bridge where those beams were in good condition.
Sean? On these beams, is the cement primarily to protect the steel beams?
On these beams, is the cement primarily to protect the steel beam within? Or does the cement add additional structural support?
They actually work together as one unit. The concrete, it does encapsulate the reinforcing steel. The reinforcing steel is what provides your load carrying capacity.
Right.
But the concrete at your supports is what actually supports the bridge from shearing off. So they work together as one.
So knowing that that concrete is heavy and adds additional, and I'm not an engineer, but it adds additional weight to that, how come they don't use something that's a lighter substance to protect the steel from the deterioration?
That's a good point. And in today's technology, there are fiber reinforced materials that do take the place of reinforcing steel as one that can't rust. They will put high tension fiber reinforced bars in place of rebar. Concrete, concrete's still the number one use in any kind of beam structure like this or steel. But as, it's just cost. Cost is the big thing. Cost, technology and newer things cost more money, so.
Are those beams, are they manufactured in the East River? When one of those goes out, basically, there must be a manufacturing plant. You say, look, I need one that's twenty feet long, this wide. They say, we can have it in six weeks and we'll deliver it out here and then set in place?
That is correct. There are a few beam manufacturers. Forterra is the biggest one in the region, I believe Mitchell Plant. They have a plant outside of Bismarck as well that makes beams, so.
See, the thing that I see is all these bridges go back to nineteen seventy-two. So what we're looking at in two years from now, we're going to see a lot more. So probably want to keep that phone number is what I'm saying.
We got it on speed dial. And Mark, I guess to answer your question about concrete and steel, concrete is very good in compression. So you put a big load on it, it'll take all the compression going straight down on it. And your steel is what is good in tension. So you can, you can pull on your steel and it's good in tensile strength. So that's how Sean was saying that they work together. So if you have just concrete, it doesn't work because it'll crumble under the tension.
Right.
And that's why these are pre-stressed concrete. So that's why you have to have rebar in concrete. They work together as one single beam or single unit, so.
And I can add on something to this. It's kind of, kind of related. The incubator at the school mines were startup companies. I remember several years ago, I had a company in there that was working on rebar for bridges that was non-corrosive and so forth. You know, I don't know where it's at now, but you kind of mentioned there are other things. But I distinctly remember that company, they're working on some stuff.
And there's several companies that coat rebar too with a, with a non-corrosive coating.
Epoxy coated is a primary in deck surfacing on like your highway bridges. You'll see that, the green rebar, it's epoxy on top of it. And they also, they do make stainless steel rebar, but that's very expensive.
Yeah, I imagine.
And Sean, you guys are designing our two bridges on Thunderhead Falls, which we chose to go with a slab bridge. So would those bridges have epoxy coating?
We intend to use epoxy coating on those.
We didn't have pictures of those bridges up here though, huh?
No, that was actually on last year's inspection.
Okay.
Thirty, thirty-one foot bridges, that'll be replaced with similar bridge, forty to forty-four foot bridges.
And we're not replacing them with double Ts. We're going to a slab concrete, slab, basically a concrete slab on steel. So you're getting away from the double Ts. Costs a little bit more upfront, but the, you're not going to have these double Ts failing like this because your steel is, is your supporting and your, your concrete is sat on top of those.
They're, I'm sure you've seen a box culvert, right? A slab bridge is essentially a three-sided box culvert. It has the open channel that with, with rock and stuff underneath of it, but it has three sides that are continuous concrete.
Okay.
Overall, overall, how have the, the concrete, the buttments that hold the twin Ts, how have they looked, are they in pretty good shape?
They are in pretty good shape. Like the, the bridges along Nemo Road, the, the supporting elements underneath were in decent shape. There was some that have steel framing for your piers. Minor, minor rusting on top, but they were cleaned and painted as part of the rehabilitation project. So that has helped those out as well.
And I assume because they're vertical, they don't, you don't have sitting, they're not exposed to the salt as much?
Correct. The only place you see it is the joints between the beams where they come together. It migrates through there and you can get some bonding along it. But for the most part, it does run past and rain and what have you helps wash that off as well.
Interesting.
My only comment is I learned something today. I didn't know you washed the bridges every spring. So that's good to know.
Anything further?
That's all I have. Any other questions?
Any other questions for Sean?
It was a good presentation, thank you.
Interesting report, Sean.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks, Sean. So Joe, before you go on to item B, tell us about the washing of the bridges. How do you do that?
They get our water tanker, usually we call it the Silver Bullet. I believe it's a six or eight thousand gallon water tanker. For like those on Thunderhead Falls, we've got a smaller tanker that we put on a truck. Dan and our shop has built these carbide kits. So we can put a water tanker pretty much on any of these new trucks that we've built. So they can, we've got, I think, two water tankers, Mark? I think two of those smaller water tanks that we can throw, put on those trucks. And we can only fill them so far to get across those bridges that have those load limits and wash those. Otherwise, we use our, our big water tank with a hose and a pump, so.
How the bridge at Silver City look?
I don't know that that was on, that was last year's inspection. But we did, if I may, Silver City, we're actually looking at designing that one in twenty twenty-one for a bridge or a big funded bridge in twenty twenty-two. So that's tentatively the plan. We haven't sat down and nailed it down, but tentatively, that's, that's the plan for twenty-one.
So right now, is there a load limit on that bridge?
Yes.
Okay.
I couldn't tell you what it is, but there is a load limit.
Item B, joint powers maintenance agreement.
Joint Powers Maintenance Agreement here comes to you. Oh, I don't know when that, or when the Highway forty-four reconstruction was, but it was quite a few years ago. Rapid City's been paying the power bill on these, these two lights that we have on Longview. The DOT, as part of the Highway forty-four, reconstructed several intersections, Longview being one of those, and put up streetlights. DOT then transferred those to the city. So we now have to take responsibility for those two lights and that's what this agreement is. We haven't, one of the light poles is right in the apex of a corner coming downhill. So if it's icy or somebody's not paying attention, that's the first thing that they hit. So it was hit this last summer. The prior two times, it was during the winter months. But it was hit this summer, so logic says, well, it's probably going to get hit again. So why put the hazard back up? We chose at that time not to put, put the luminaire or the, the streetlight back up just due to the safety factor and we don't want to keep replacing it. It needs to be moved across the road or up the road. And the cost to move it was about twelve thousand bucks, which wasn't in our budget. So we chose just not to put it back up.
What would the cost be to repair it, just out of curiosity?
I believe it's around twenty-five hundred, three thousand bucks per time. Generally, we can get that back out of the insurance company, but it, it goes back to why have a hazard there if you know it's going to get hit? Three times seems a little excessive to me, so.
Commissioner LaCroy?
I think you just answered my question. Usually when they're hit, we get the insurance money. So on this last go around, we probably received the insurance money and it's put in our budget.
I don't know if we did receive it on this last go around. I'm not positive on that.
Might have been uninsured or something.
It very well could be. I can't answer that question, no. I can find out for you if you'd like.
For the questions of Joe, is there a motion?
Move to proof.
Got a motion from Commissioner Roskinak. Is there a second? And a second from Commissioner DeSanto, further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, next comes to you with the, the load limits on the new bridge on Old Hill City Road of, let me get to it here, I believe it's twenty thirty-two? Twenty thirty-three, okay. With the, the weight limits on that bridge of twenty for a straight truck and thirty-three for a combination vehicle, our plow trucks weigh as about eighteen tons. So we're within two tons of that. So if we have any sanding material on the truck at all, we're not able to cross that bridge. So we reached out to the city of Keystone who has a one-ton pickup and they do their streets with that pickup. So we threw out, I guess, we'll provide a hundred tons of sanding material if you, if they will plow up to that bridge, past it. So we don't have to take our pickup plow down there to do that. So they have agreed to that and that's the reason for it. So, but that'll stand for any questions?
Any questions? Nope, I move to proof. Got a motion from Commissioner Roskinak, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner LaCroy, further discussion?
Just one thing to point out.
Commissioner DeSanto?
Forty-five dollars a ton, that's forty-five hundred dollars per year?
Correct. And we hope to have that bridge rehabilitated in twenty-one as well, you know, it's only one beam or a couple beams. What's that?
Then we won't have to do that anymore.
Correct.
Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next comes to you. So Lawrence County has been plowing the town of Rochford for us for many years, it seems. We looked up when, when that was first chip sealed, was nineteen ninety. And they haven't been getting anything for it from Pennington County. So with the, with Josh, our new foreman, starting in Hill City, he noticed that not all of the pavement was being done. So we asked the question and so we reached out to Alan Bonnema up in Lawrence County to ask, you know, what, what was the reason for it? And it turns out that the superintendent up there didn't even know it was being done. So there's an agreement that was put in, a verbal agreement that was put into place before his time. So we did come to an understanding that we will go further into Nemo in exchange for them, for them plowing this town of Rochford asphalt for us. You know, one of those factors was the bridge that we couldn't cross. It's been probably fifteen years for that bridge that we couldn't cross. But before that, it was, it was an island for us, right? It needs sanding material since it was an asphalt, since they're asphalt roads. So instead of having to take our truck all the way up there from Hill City, it was asked at that time that if Lawrence County would do it. And it turns out they've been doing it for a long time for free. So hopefully this is the last year that we have to do that. And we get South Rochford Road paved next year. And the bridge is actually due to be let tomorrow. So hopefully all of those will take care of themselves within the next year or two.
Move to proof. Got a motion from Commissioner Roskinak, is there a second?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner LaCroy, further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next, Joe. Add us from HR, John.
Good morning, Commissioners, John Morrell, Pennington County, Human Resources. So what I have before you today is actually the creation of a new position and then the applied rating through the Gallagher DBM system. So we're seeking to have approval to add the position of Public Safety Wellness Coordinator within the sheriff's office. This would actually take effect, if you will, the beginning of the new fiscal year, so December twenty-seventh. And then the recommended motion is there for your review as well.
So John, this is not a existing position, I mean, a person doesn't exist in this position or at all at this point in time, so it's creating a?
Great question, sir. So there is a person in the position. This board actually approved the hiring of a position back in July.
Yeah.
But at that point, we didn't have this position. But it was a retired law enforcement person that was hired in July. They were brought in as a program coordinator. What this will do is actually properly identify the, the work that they're doing and then also apply a rating for pay scale purposes.
Okay, thank you, John. Questions is John or is there a motion?
Mr. Chair. So this, basically to clarify Gary's question, we're not hiring somebody else?
No, sir, correct.
This is a position that exists that's just being changed, the names being changed?
We're actually, yes.
Very good.
Commissioner LaCroy?
Thank you. You know, I just wanted to give a little more background on this for people that will YouTube in on, on this meeting. You know, when you, when you see the position of wellness coordinating, you think of physical fitness and, and nutrition and so forth. And in reality, this person's going to be coordinating, you know, Pennington County Sheriff's, county altogether with the sheriffs and the jails and so forth. They see people at their worsts and they see some things that, and treated them not fairly or, you know, you know what I'm saying, they're not treated well. And sometimes the employees need to talk to someone or get some further counseling in order to keep their faith in what they're doing. It helps so they have a healthy home life and a healthy work life. And that's what I, that's what I see in this is it's a help for our employees if they need it or want it or to reach out. But one of the other things when I was reading through this is I think it's an untapped resource for all of the employees, not just the jail and Sheriff's Department side of it. But I'm sure you deal with that quite a bit with, with insurance companies. We have phone, phone calls, I want to say psychologists, but counseling and so forth for our employees. But I don't know if you can just give us a little brief on that, John?
You bet. Yeah, so really the emotional wellbeing is probably a bigger concern with regard to our law enforcement and anybody in public service. When you look at that, again, Commissioner LaCroy, you're, you're spot on. They, they deal with people at their worst and they may personally be affected by those things as well, whether it's them individually, family members, or even just the job, the toll it takes on them on a daily basis. This is to help provide support for them, provide other outlets to help solve some of those different crises that they may be experiencing and to also help them in general just have a more positive experience as they're doing their jobs. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to tap into some of the suggestions that they use. We do have Connections EAP to help our employees throughout the county. But again, they don't have all of the access to resources that I believe that this role will have. So I, I see this as a huge benefit for the county.
Okay, thank you, John. Further questions, John?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner LaCroy?
I'd make the motion to approve the position entitled Public Safety Wellness Coordinator at the DBM rating C forty-one and authorize Human Resources to update the position listening on the file in the HRC office.
Motion from Commissioner LaCroy, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Roskinak, further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item fifteen, Mystic Road. First item under there is the request to reduce the speed limit. I know that we have, we have at least Dave Korbish on Zoom. I'm not sure if he's interested in the speed limit or just on the mag water policy.
Commissioner, it's Dave Korbish, can you hear me?
Yes, certainly can.
Actually, I'd really kind of like to speak about Mystic Road in total, if we could. I'm not sure of the commissioner, of what's on the agenda specifically for, to approve or not approve based on item number A, but I'd like to have a conversation that encompasses both A and B, if that's possible.
That is possible. Just hold on a second and we'll get to that. This is in Commissioner Roskinak's district. I'm going to ask Commissioner Roskinak, do you have anything you want to say prior to opening this up for a discussion?
Okay, relative to the request for a speed limit reduction?
Yeah.
Well, I've been, I've been working with the landowners for about the last six weeks and we know that we got a number of problems. ATV, the increase in that traffic is one of them. We know that the clay is hard to find as such. To me, the gravel that we're putting on Mystic Road is inferior. It would be my opinion that the slower a vehicle goes, the less dust you're going to get. And dust is, dust seems to be one of the major problems. So, and I can totally understand Mr. Harkins' concern about the speed that. that, uh, people are traveling on Mystic Road. My, uh, original, uh, motion was going to be to reduce the speed, uh, in front of, where there, there's that large straightaway down the forty, but then the more I think about it, it's forty and it's fifty, so my recommendation would be to reduce the speed on Mystic Road, the forty, the entire eleven-point-four-seven miles.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ross Connect. Um, Joe, are you just pulling it up, or?
Well, I guess, uh, you know, that, that motion, Commissioner Ross Connect, would be a lot better than, than slowing it down to twenty-five, um, just in front of, uh, the homeowners, due, due to the fact that most of your washboarding, um, comes from the speeding up, the deceleration and acceleration, so, um, I, I think we could, you know, get behind having the speed limit forty miles an hour on Mystic Road. Um, the, the eighty-fifth percentile speed, I believe, from the twenty-nineteen, um, was about that forty miles an hour, um, so I, we could get behind, if that's the, the wishes of the commission, um, you know, forty or fifty people are still going to drive how they feel, um, comfortable, um, so I think they're, they're driving forty miles an hour where we had our, our counters placed. Um, now that wasn't in front of Mr. Harkins' place, as, as was pointed out at the meeting, um, last Friday, so I, I have no objections to, or no, uh...
Mr. Chair, and if we do that job, then there's advisory signs, uh, on the real sharp corners that, would they have to be redone? Because if they do, we're going to re-sign that whole, uh, Mystic Road, right, with the reflectors and deflectors, whatever, so it would kind of all, uh, fall together about the same time?
Well, so the, the signing project is due for completion, um, August of this next Sorry, I wasn't prepared for that question here. Yes.
While you're looking that up, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I, I could support the forty mile, because I, I think that's what, uh, the average speed was when I was reading through the reports, and I, I think that's, I think there's no quick cure for the total problem, there, I think there's more than one, and this would probably be one, uh, step, so I just wanted to make sure that the, the landowners know that, you know, this isn't a cure-all for some of the problems that are happening, you know, with the growth that we're having in our county with, uh, hunting, tourism, and so forth, that we're just getting more miles involved.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner LaCroy. Finding it, Joe?
Oh, I gotta remember how to get there. See here, content. I was just going to give you guys a visual on the, the countywide signing project. Um, there's a lot of delineators, there's, I believe there's thirty-three thousand delineators going on, or going in, which is, which are the little white, um, reflectors that you see on the, alongside the interstate, they're spaced out a couple hundred feet on the interstate. Um, those will be placed along sharp curves and, and objects, um, as you can see, those are all signs, red X's are old signs that are being removed, um, the stars are new signs being placed in, uh, so let's see if we can get to Mystic here. So as you can see, there's quite a few signs going in, these, uh, that's an obit, object marker, so it must be a culvert or some sort there. These diamonds here that you can see, those are the delineators, um, and he's just, on this map, the delineators, he's got a, a start and an end, and I believe there's red dots kind of where the, so there's a delineator there, delineator, um, so yeah, along the, the, the course here, there's, there's numerous signs going in, um, both old ones coming out and new ones going in. Um, they changed the, so county used to use a ball banking, um, which the ball banking is the centrifugal force as you go around a corner, I don't, not exactly sure how it, how it's done, um, but you go around the corner at a certain speed and above or below the, the posted speed limit, and see if that gets to twelve, twelve degrees, you're on your centrifugal force meter there. Um, with that, the, the state or the federal highway guidelines are ten, 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 instead of twelve, fourteen, sixteen. Um, so even at what, the, the highest of speeds, they still have to stay below that ten degrees of centrifugal force, so that, what that does is it calls for chevrons and advisory plaques, much like Ron Ross Connect, uh, Commissioner Ross Connect was, was saying, so.
Okay, thank you, Joe. I do have a speaker request on both A and B, uh, from Jan Humphrey, and Jan is here. Jan, would you like to come forward, please?
First off, thank you, Vice Chair and Commissioners, for allowing me to speak. Um, and I want to thank Ron, um, he's given us a platform to talk to you guys about this. Um, my name is Jan Humphrey, I live out on Castle Peak, at the intersection of Castle Peak, or near the intersection of Castle Peak and Mystic Road, which is where the Old Town side of Castleton was. I've been there since nine, since two thousand and one, I moved here from Los Angeles, I married a South Dakota boy, so we came back to take care of his mom. He was a firefighter for thirty-five years with LA County Fire Department, and I am the daughter of a police officer, so I kind of know county stuff. Um, basically, this is a letter for my recommenda, or this is a request for my lec, letter of recommendation, where I was told that I could apply for a grant, uh, to maybe help the county get some money or funding to maybe mag water this road, okay? So I requested, um, just the idea of coming to you and talking to you about, um, making you understand that we're here not to bash anybody, we're not here to do anything that with, against the Forest Service or ATVs, but basically, I'm here to bring you to the, the attention of your asset, which is Mystic Road. Um, it was really destroyed and misused over, by overwhelming amount of traffic. Um, and I, and I'm the person that kind of took on the job, um, in the community. I went first with a, just a grassroots approach, giving signatures to see if we could get your attention, or somebody's attention, we approached Ron, and he has been bending it all backwards for us. So yes, we had a lack of moisture, there's a ton of dust, we understand that, but I moved here during a drought, and we had a drought for seven years, and that road was not that bad. Then two thousand and eight, things changed, of course, we weren't really aware of how the abatement rules were changed, but there wasn't the same kind of care to the road after that, and things, you know, we had good years and we had bad years, where the moisture levels rose and fall, fell. So we had to just kind of watch this. Um, we look at this as a destination road. This is a road where people come out of Hill City, they don't go up through the Rochford area, or up through the old South Rochford Road to get to Rochford, they come through the Mystic Road. And then we also have the Mickelson Trailhead, um, at Mystic, which is the most popular trailhead on the Mickelson Trail. And I know that, because there's been articles written about it, there's things that people come from, there was an article four years ago in a French magazine, and within that year, we had dozens and dozens of people from France riding that trail. So we know that this is going on. Um, we just want to keep the integrity of the road right. Um, those of us that live on the road, you know, have watched it really deteriorate. Um, the gravel aggregate and the fines have just disappeared. The fines go off into the wind and then choke the forest, and that's about all that's left in the road to actually keep it together. So, you know, at some point, we had to talk to you guys about it. Um, and I have to disagree with counts, because we know that you place them somewhere where they don't always have the same kind of people traveling across them, but we witnessed all summer long, thousands of ATVs, not hundreds, thousands. Um, there was a guy that sat on Deerfield Road with a counter, and it ended at twelve-hundred in one day. So at that point, we were, we got to do something. Um, and even smaller weighted motorized machines, which have been brought to everybody's attention, if there's a lot of them, they do just as much damage as a pickup truck. There are approximately fifty-one of us out there. We drive pickup trucks, some of us do, some of us don't. Most of us agree that we follow the rules and do the speed limit. In fact, if you ride from Deerfield to my house at thirty miles out, thirty-nine miles an hour, you don't have to step on the brakes, and that's below speed limit. But that's us, everybody that came here. Five years ago, South Dakota legislation sponsored with this bo, Forest Service and other entities, and created and voted to open up the trail systems in the Black Hills. This wasn't even passed onto the public until after the fact, so okay, we've got a few groups organized and provide information for those trails. We saw a few vehicles, mainly local people, riding back and forth. Summer of two thousand and nineteen saw a great uptick in traffic, and then articles, again, were written about the trails in the Black Hills, which included an extensive increase for the Mickelson Trailhead. Then COVID hit, and they came in droves to escape the viruses in their areas and enjoy the outdoors, and bring virus with them. However, they weren't here to obey any kind of rules, and they were made, that were made, and since there have been no patrols with this onslaught, we, the residents, were witness to an overwhelming amount of damage done to the roads. Enter, around town, they, just the amount of vehicles that were in Hill City this summer was staggering. Um, the Forest Service has admitted they're overwhelmed, they don't know what to do about it. So what do we do? I still believe this is an asset to you as a road, we're, we're, we know that, I, I worked for an RV park this summer, and, um, at any given time, I was told that the population in that RV park was, was, you know, last year was maybe two-thirds full. This year, we were full every single day, and every single person just about had an ATV on a trailer. So, and of course, I'm welcoming them in, but I'm trying to, they're asking me, where do we go to ride these vehicles? I sent them to Custer.
Hey, Jan, I just want to point out, there's item fifteen, there's three segments, there's A, and we're just talking about the speed limit?
Oh.
B will be, I think, the dust control, mag water, C will be your application.
Okay.
So we're, right now, we're getting ready to vote on a, on the speed limit for Mystic Road, uh, we...
And put the year.
I made the recommendation, we lower it to forty miles an hour for the entire road. Do you have anything you want to say about that?
Um, well, as far as I'm concerned, if you do lower the speed limit, it makes it better for everybody that lives there or drives it. Um, I, I, I'm the daughter of a police officer, speed limits were a big thing growing up, you know, I was taught not to pass the speed limit, because it's safety, it's a safety issue. And with the dust, if you're going slower, you have the ability to slow down and pull over and not be in a head-on collision. So, I have a few other things to say afterwards, but...
Okay, we'll call it, we'll get a couple more issues.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Dave, do you want to?
Yeah, really, first of all, Ron, thank you very much, and, and Chair, Co-Chair, please thank you very much for letting me participate via Zoom today. Unfortunately, due to COVID and other factors, um, I was unable to travel to South Dakota today, um, but thank you again for letting me participate. You know, and just to introduce myself, my name is Dave Kobbish, my, my family, the Kobbish family, we have lived on Mystic Road for over sixty years. Our, our prop, our ranch was purchased right after World War Two, and we have nearly one mile of the road that directly goes through our property. We also have over a mile of the Mickelson Trail that goes through our property, and I share this with you, not to try to impress you with numbers, but to voice a little bit of, of what was said previously, the residents in this area are very aware of what's going on with the road, and we have a, a large amount of history. You know, there used to be a period with which the county did treat the road for, for many decades, um, and that stopped, and I believe it primarily stopped because of a budget issue. Um, you know, the county, if you look on page seventy-two of your handout today, the county has six roads that are topping over two hundred cars a day, and this issue of looking at these high utilization of roads is one that the county really needs to take some time to understand about, real data and understand it. I think the element of lowering the speed limit on Mystic Road is a start, but it really should be in the county's best interest to step back a little bit, craft a group of people that can use real data, not anecdotal data, or data that we can all believe in, both the county staff and the residents, to find a real solution to this. You know, the areas that people are talking about, about lowering the speeds, these aren't really county roads, they're really residential areas now, and they, that wasn't that way previously. Previously, there were about five families that lived on Mystic Road, that is not true any longer. There are, as, as Jan mentioned, there's probably fifty-one, and I can tell you, there might even be more than that. The, the traffic is far greater than what was done via the traffic counts, and we're not disputing the information that the county generated on its counter, what we're trying to tell you is that we don't believe that that was really accurate. Um, you know, the, the, most of us that have family members or that live on the road directly, we don't really see, we see this as a health and safety issue. You know, I have fam, I, we now have three residences on our ranch, they're occupied all by people that live over sixty years old, um, one member is actually on full-time oxygen, we literally, she literally cannot leave the house for very much timeframe because of the dust. We can't have the windows open, we can't sit outside, we can't do anything, and so I'm not here griping and asking the county to, to immediately, that the answer is mag water and to immediately fix it. What I'm asking you to do is to sit down and really understand wider about how does the county react or modify its policy around these sorts of high-use roads that have gravel? You know, there was, I went back and spent the, uh, I went back and took the time to review the November fifth video of the entire conversation around this, and frankly, neither the citizen that presented nor the county actually used credible data in their conversation, and that, and that conversation deteriorated into, um, assumptions around solutions that frankly just weren't true, and it said that, you know, if, it, comments were made that if, if one, if the county treats one part, one road one way, then it has to treat all the roads the same, that, that doesn't have to be the case. There are ways to create tiered policies and use good data to do that. And so what I would really, you know, there also are, are valid national EPA regulations around elements of dust that are appropriate for people, in fact, the county does have a dust policy for construction zones. And so what we're really asking the county to do is to formally craft a group that can identify and acknowledge an issue that can help us find a solution. You know, you're seeing Jan come forward with, you know, the, the residents are willing to help, we're very credible, we're experienced people, we have leadership abilities, um, we have knowledge, we've done elements of this work before in other areas, we know how to work through funding things with this. So what we would ask the county to do is to use, um, what I would ask the county to you, to do, is to actually use Mystic Road as a bit of a learning laboratory, about what is the, how does the county actually take credible data when it's trying to answer questions that are coming up from residents around conditions of, of these roads and of, of these roads and utilization of them? And, you know, I, I spent my entire career in nonprofit finance. I understand funding dilemmas. There's never enough operating or capital money that, for any nonprofit organization, there simply isn't. Budgets become literally prioritization exercises around greatest needs.
Dave, Dave, I'm going to stop you there. I think we're going to, right now, look at the, the speed limit issue. You can speak on these other areas again as, as we get to them. But I would, I would ask, do you have an opinion on the speed limit? Commissioner Ross Connect did recommend 40 mile an hour on it.
I actually would ask the county to go back and look at like residential areas before it recommends a speed limit. Many residential areas have 25 mile an hour speed limits. There are approximately three, or there's probably four residential areas on Mystic Road. And so while the overall general speed of the road reducing to 40 will certainly help, I, I would question and ask the county to consider before you, you can certainly take 40 as a beginning step. But I would ask the county to come back and really look at these residential areas and what is the appropriate speed limit for these places?
Okay, thank you, Dave.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross.
That being said, I, I think today, I think 40 is a, it's a step in the right direction. It might not be what, what's going to happen in two years from now, but it's better than 50. And I think we can get that accomplished today. And I'm, I'm all for sitting down and working with the landowners and trying to work out all the different issues that we're facing with Mystic Road. So I think, right now, I'd appreciate a vote on the reduction of the speed limit.
I'll make the motion to change the speed limit to 40 miles per hour.
Okay, I've got a motion from Commissioner La Croix to reduce the speed limit to 40 mile an hour. Is there a second?
I'll second that for discussion.
And, okay, I have a second from Commissioner DeSanto for discussion purposes. Commissioner DeSanto.
I, I respect the request for the reduction in speed limit. I think it'll help somewhat and with Joe's consensus being that that's not a big issue as far as the entire length of the road. I don't, I agree with Joe that it's speeding up and slowing down is what causes the corduroy in the road. And so therefore, I, I would not be in agreement with having multiple different speed limits on, on Mystic Road. But that, I think, is a step in the right direction. I think that 40 is, I drive that road a lot because I do a lot of fishing. And I, I think that 40 is an appropriate speed limit for, for that particular road, considering the curvatures and that kind of stuff in it.
When, when Ken asked for the reduction, he thought the speed limit was 40 and he asked to reduce it to 25. So essentially, we're doing the same thing that he asked because the speed limit is 50. And we're, we're gonna, you know, reduce it by 10. So hopefully, that will create better situations in the future.
Yes, and who made the motion? Was that Ross Connect?
Oh, La Croix did.
La, La Croix, so Connie just reminded me of this fact via text message, so thank you, Connie. You guys need to direct the Highway Department to draft a speed limit resolution. We can't, we don't have the resolution today, so that would be, need to be the motion, not to change the speed limits.
I think that was my motion.
Second, okay with that.
So, so, so the motion and the second is to ask the Highway Department to draft a resolution to accomplish this.
There you go.
Okay. Question for you, Joe. I'm gonna, I'm gonna support this when it comes to it. Not that I necessarily think that, that it's gonna do a lot for it because people are gonna drive what they're gonna drive, I think, unfortunately. My question really is, next year, as we're doing South Rochford Road, is that gonna put more traffic, do you think, over on Mystic Road?
I guess, you know, if I had a crystal ball, I could probably answer that question truthfully. You know, the, my assumption would be that with Rochford Road or South Rochford Road being paved, you know, there's quite a few trails off of South Rochford Road. The, they speak of the, the UTV usage. They are licensed to be on the street and on the county roads. So, you know, most of those guys that we've, and we heard from the UTV users last, the Mystic Road meeting, you know, they don't want to be on the, the county gravel roads just as bad as, as people don't want them there. So with that being said, I don't know if it'll alleviate the UTV traffic, but I think the, the truck traffic and the regular traffic, they're gonna see South Rochford Road as a paved route and they're gonna choose that one over, over Mystic. Because you pave road, you don't have to deal with washboards and dusts. And, and there's a lot of people that frankly don't like getting their cars dirty, so.
Right. I do think, my point on this is that I think that once the South Rochford Road is paved, I think it may take some of that traffic off it. Obviously, it probably is not going to take the ATV, UTVs off of the Mystic Road. But hopefully, that'll show a little reduction at that point in time. I've got a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? The motion and the second is to request the Highway Department to bring back a resolution to reduce the speed limit from 50 to 40 on Mystic Road. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we'll go to B. Now we'll go to the county mag water policy. And so if anybody wants to speak directly relative to the mag water policy, I would entertain those discussions right now. Jan, do you want to speak on those? Please.
Thank you, and I apologize for not understanding. I thought I'd just put down that I'd talk about B and C, or C and, yeah, B and C. But I'm glad I could comment on A as well. So what I was basically saying earlier is that, you know, the homeowners are trying to stand up and just be recognized that there is a problem out here. And we know that you didn't cause it, but you're gonna probably have to cure it in a way. So at some point, everybody made money on this recreation out here. Everybody. But the county's gonna be left with, with a problem. And that's why we are trying to be heard. Because we know that this is a county issue first. And then everybody else that kind of is responsible for these situations is coming up in the rear. And, you know, I kind of look at us as the stewards in a way. You know, because we're trying to tell you that we want to work with you, we want to try other things. And when we had a meeting on November 7th, we didn't really get any ideas that there were some, some solutions. But Jim Goebbels from the Forest Service at the District Ranger Station said, hey, there's a grant out there. No, I'm not a grant writer, but I went ahead and did it. I don't even want to go into how hard that was. But, and, and Mr. Miller had also talked about that there was a grant opportunity, maybe a one-time grant with game fishing parks. Now, we haven't heard about that, but I'm willing to look into it if I knew about it. So basically, we're trying, we're trying to find out if that's a feasible thing. And if it can actually happen, that might help. And I did apply for that grant, but I do not know if there's going to be a guarantee that we'll get any of it. That, one of the things I just want to point out is that in Hill City alone, there were 79 books of passes that were sold at one location. And each one of those books has 25 passes at $25 apiece. That's 1,975 passes that were sold at one location in Hill City. That's $49,375 that went into that fund that we will never see. There were no patrols. There was no way for anybody to, I'd call the sheriff and an hour and a half later, because they're busy, they couldn't get out here. We had lots and lots of issues. We also know that there's a business starting up in, in Hill City that is going to put in 100 ATVs at their location. So again, I'm not here to bash ATV people, but I think it has ruined it even for the local ATV people that have clubs in this area of the Black Hills. They can't ride the hills like they want to.
Jan, if I can just stop you. Just want to clarify that the passes that you talk about are the Forest Service passes?
Yes.
And tho, those dollars go to the Forest Service, they don't come to the county?
Right.
Okay.
Yes. But of course, you know, they can't share that with us because it goes into their general fund. So, but there were no patrols either. So at some point, you would think that if they're collecting past money, what are they doing with that money? And, you know, I ask that, but I come to you guys first and then we go up the ladder. So at this point, if I didn't speak up, or us out here on the road didn't speak up, you wouldn't know what's going on. And so at this point, I, I don't see a resolution right today. So I'm gonna ask if you guys could look at this and vote for a continuance of this issue. Probably until January, maybe in the third week in January at some point, where we can maybe explore more options for funding. Because like I said, I don't know how much I'm gonna get from that grant from the Forest Service. It's a RAC grant that I'm waiting, you know. The Forest Service, Kelly at USDA, who is actually the facilitator for the grant, said that she will allow us to wait, or them to wait to get a letter of recommendation from you past the deadline, which was yesterday. And the grant did go through and it did get into her office yesterday. So at this point, if I can get a recommendation for that and it goes on to that file, I'll know sometime after December 10th, whatever funding they can provide us. So again, if we do have a continuance about the Mystic Road mag water, then maybe we can come back in January and work on something else.
Okay, thank you, Jan. Dave, would you like to comment on that?
Yeah, first of all, Jan, thanks for being there on purpose. And I know that that work on that grant took a lot of time. And I do want to recognize Commissioner Ross Connect for helping us with this issue. At the November 5th meeting, people were very complimentary and we continue to be very complimentary of him helping us with this issue. I would just, I would echo Jan's request about it being a continuance. But I would go back to my previous comments and ask the county to really help us. I'm gonna use the words formally charter a group to understand what is an appropriate outcome for Mystic Road using true credible data. And that we as residents can partner with the county officials, I'm assuming it would be members of Joe and his staff, that we can, we can credibly work together as a group in an open and honest forum to, to come back with, to the county with a solution on how a mag water policy, not just for Mystic Road, but how it may actually work across the county. This is a great learning opportunity for the county. Pennington County is growing. This is only going to get worse and worse. And as Jan mentioned, this problem simply won't go away. It just gets worse and worse. So I would, the county would not only, that the commission would not only have a continuance, but would also voice support for us formally chartering a group that we can work with Commissioner Ross Connect, and I know he will help us, and with Joe's team to come back to the county with some information that we can say, listen, we're smarter. Here's what could be a good recommendation. The whole topic of funding is one that every county, every municipality has to work through. As I mentioned earlier, it just becomes an exercise of prioritization and how things work out. And, and the questions, when we left the November 6th meeting with Commissioner Ross Connect, I actually, I guess inappropriately assumed that that would be the next steps, that we would sit down as a group and try to work through this. Not, not in, in heated conversation here at the commission that we saw on November 5th, but really in a very collaborative way. And I think it does take the county formally saying that's what you want to do so that we feel empowered and we feel in partnership with the county to help find a solution. That's what I would ask.
Thank you, Mr. Cobbish. Commissioner Ross Connect.
I, I agree. I'll, I'll step up to the plate and I'll work with this group if we can do a continuance and we can figure out how we want to go in the future. I don't think today's a good day to make a hard decision.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner La Croix.
I just wanted to pass on to, to Jan and Dave. On our agenda, on the next page, we have item C, a recommendation from the Planning Commission to form a committee to address infrastructure and road improvements in the county. And I think that's probably the number one step for the board itself is to identify other areas and, and as you were saying, prioritizing where some of our problem areas. That's what we, we, we need to, to work on in order to make a good informed decision. I think that's another step that, that could happen. I mean, that's next, further on, later on in our agenda. I totally agree with you guys wanting to do your specialty group and, and trying to form that route. But I think the Planning Commission has concerns on, on usage of the roads and, and they voiced that a couple, last couple of meetings that I've been to. And, and for this group to come up with that idea, I think is a good first step for us as a county as a whole. I just wanted to pass that on, that that's on our agenda later on.
Thank you for bringing that out. We would be glad to participate with that group in a way that's appropriate to, to help their work, as I mentioned earlier, around doing this. You know, there's been comments made at previous county meetings that talk about tremendous backlogs of road maintenance. And I hope, and I'm assuming that that agenda item is intended to take a long-term strategic view about how the county solves these. And it has to start with just good conversation. If it starts with, we don't have any money and we can't do anything, that's really not going to lead to a good outcome. So thank you for reminding us of that. And please, if you can, Jan and I, and I'm, I'm assuming Commissioner Ross Connect, we would be glad to participate with that group.
Thank you. Joe, do you have something?
Um, I, I guess if you guys are gonna continue it, I, I really don't have anything. I do, I, I did put together some costs, just cost share from the last 10 years just with our mag water policy as it has been since 2008. You know, so 2001, Hiney saw that this is gonna cost the county a, a lot of money. So they implemented that, the dust abatement policy in 2001 and, and refined it in 2008. Since 2010, the county has actually spent approximately $100,000 on, on mag water via county resident requests. The landowner's share of that, total project cost is about $127,000. The landowner's share of that is 21.4% and the county's share of that was 78.6. So there is, it is a cost share because it takes some work to get roads into, to mag water. Our belief at that, you know, my belief and, and our, this policy's been working. Mark has been in, in the front office since 2007. And it, and it's worked since then. You know, in, in county highway, mag water is, is almost a luxury item, I guess, type, type of thing, for lack of a better term there. It doesn't necessarily prolong your, your gravel. It actually costs more because you take the, the average gravel maintenance and then you add the cost of 8,000 bucks a mile. Total gravel cost maintenance is about 5,500 bucks a year per mile. And mag water is not something that you can, you need to do it at least every year or every other year. It's not something that'll just, you can put it on there and it lasts forever. So it's an ongoing thing. So with that being said, I fully support whatever this commission wishes to do. But those are just some of the things that we're, we're faced with. We've got fi, 472 miles of gravel road. You know, we've got quite a few roads that are, that do have, I guess there's three roads that have a higher traffic count than, than Mystic. There's some other ones that are right up there with Mystic as well. So I think if the county wishes to, to take a look at this mag water policy, that's what we'll do. But I, I think the mag water policy as it is, is working. But I think the Magwater policy as it is, is working and it has worked for a number of years. So, with that being said, I think.
Superintendent Miller? I would tell you that from a citizen's perspective, the Magwater policy doesn't work. It works for you economically, that's what it does. It has helped, it has made us as residents feel like our health and safety are at jeopardy. And I hear your words around, you know, we can, if we do one thing for one, we're going to do it for all. That's not what we're asking. We're asking for the county to take a holistic viewpoint. We, you know, the recommendation just specific to Mystic Road, there's really about four miles where people live.
Dave, we recognize that you're not, you're not asking that, but what, I know that what was said was it does establish precedence when we do it. I think that needs to be worked through as far as this committee is concerned as to how we can handle that as far as precedence. We do know, as you just heard Joe Miller say, we have 472 miles of gravel road. We know that if we change that policy, we're going to receive many other requests for other areas, so.
If the county is thoughtful and creates a policy that addresses road type, residential use, the location of the road, this doesn't have to result in 500 miles being road, being Magwater.
Yeah, and I'm not saying it does, I'm just saying it does, it does establish a precedence. I think that's a discussion that will need to take place with the committee group that we're talking about. Right now, I'm looking for a motion for a continuance on this particular policy.
I move for a continuance.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Ross Connect. For a continuous until when?
January 19th.
Till January 19th, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
And I have a second from Commissioner LaCroy.
I would also ask that the county please voice the desire that we will need honest, open eyes and open ears from the county highway department to help us work through this.
I can assure you, you will have that.
Thank you.
With that being said, if I may, with that continuance from the highway department, are you wanting us to facilitate this? Is this, I mean, what is this discussion? What are you, what is expected from us?
I think as we get, we move on, as Commissioner LaCroy pointed out, there's another, there's another part to this that we're coming to. It's under the planning, we're going to have to discuss if this fits underneath that, this is exactly how. So, we'll have to further describe how this is designed to work. So, I have a motion and a second to continue the Magwater discussion until January 19th. Further discussion by the commission.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I'm going to weigh in on this because I won't be here on January 19th, so I am in agreement with Joe. I think the Magwater policy does work. I think it also doesn't put the burden on, we have to keep in mind that there's many taxpayers in Pennington County that live on paved roads, that chose to live on paved roads because they wanted to avoid the possibility of dust and so forth and so on. Some of these, or many of these, I would say, residents of Pennington County, my, they may never drive on Mystic Road in their entire lifetime. And I don't believe that those other taxpayers of Pennington County should be saddled with paying for the residents who chose to live on a gravel road, knowing that there would be dust on the gravel road, knowing that that could possibly cause health problems in the future as you got older or what have you. I don't think that the other taxpayers in Pennington County should be saddled with that cost. And as I said, I agree with Joe, I think the Magwater policy is working, it is costing us money, we're not charging the full cost of what it takes Pennington County to put that Magwater down. And it doesn't increase the lifespan of the road or decrease the maintenance that we have to do to the road. So, that's my two cents worth since I'm not going to be here in the future, but I do not feel that the rest of the taxpayers in Pennington County should be saddled with the cost of Magwatering gravel roads.
Commissioner DeSanto, can I respond to that?
Certainly.
We are now at commission discussion, and I have a motion on the floor, so I'm not going to allow any further discussion.
Thank you.
Further commission discussion.
My only answer to that is, for the folks that moved back there, you know, 20 years ago, we just didn't have the, we had ATVs, we had three-wheelers. Now, when you go to Hill City, because I live in Hill City, you see these machines that come in from Minnesota that cost $30,000, $25,000 with 17-year-olds driving them. It's not the same as 20 years ago. We have to, we have to sit there and say, what's going on in our world today? We can't go back 20 years, a policy that's 20 years old. We need to look at what's going on today and where we've gone in the future and.
And I would ask, how many commissioners actually live on it?
Dave, please. This is commission. Go ahead.
No, I'm just saying that it's not, we have to look at what's happening in modern times and it's the, I think the word that I look at is recreation. When you go to the, towards Wal, you have the Badlands and you have some motorcycles, but when you get, when 30,000 passes are sold for ATV use in the Black Hills, we can't ignore that.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a motion and a second. Seeing no further discussion, I would ask for all those in favor of continuing the Magwater policy discussion until January 19th, the vote aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carried, three ayes, one nay. Commissioner DeSanto. Next item we have is the letter of support for the Black Hills, it was entitled here for the Black Hills Resource Advisory Committee, and I'm going to ask Jan. Jan, did you make your grant application under that, under the auspice of that group? Okay, okay.
Through the USDA, backed by the Forest Service timber sales.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Drews, I do believe Jim Goobles from the Forest Service is in the audience as well, so.
Okay. Jim, did you want to talk on that issue?
I was here for the letter of support on the frame of acquisition, but RAC is.
Come on forward, Jim. Need you at the microphone.
All right.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners and Mr. Vice Chair. I'm actually in attendance here for the other item on your agenda involving the potential land acquisition, but RAC, I did share that information with Jan as a potential solution. I was here for the other kind of working meeting that Commissioner Ross Connect had put together on the Mystic Road. And that is an opportunity for a potential, maybe short-term solution on Mystic Road to get some funding, be it for Magwater or some other solution there. But RAC is a non-Forest Service committee of 15 folks in the three-county area that will take those proposals in, evaluate them, and then write, make a decision on which ones to fund. And essentially, there is about $300,000 available this year for projects in the three-county area.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Say, Jim?
Commissioner Ross Connect.
So, the funds, that 300,000, that's generated by timber sales within those three counties?
They are, yes.
And will we have that next year, do you think, or will it be less or more?
You know, it's tough to kind of predict that, but I believe there hasn't been a RAC committee for about the last two years, so this is the first one put together in about a two-year span to allocate those funds.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd make a motion to approve the chair's signature on the letter of support for the citizens' effort on Mystic Road project.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. Further discussion?
Yeah, Commissioner, I did, Scott Guffey did reach out to me, and Scott is actually, has two grant proposals in for this as well, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention, so.
And I presume Scott is concerned that, oh, Scott is here. Come on up, Scott.
And he hopped in his truck and drove down here in a hurry when he heard this coming.
I'm actually here for the land exchange, but Scott Guffey, thinking County Natural Resources Director, are we talking the Title II grants? The RAC grants, yeah.
Yes, yes.
So, yeah, I did apply for two, one for noxious weed control, 30,000 spread over two years, and then another one for fuels reduction, part of our shaded fuel breaks work and fuels reduction for 50,000, so I think there's close to $300,000 in there. So, I don't know how many other applicants are in there, but, you know, I think they tend to like to spread it out and not put it all into one, so they might get cut back. That's what they've done in the past, is they'll fund them all, but cut them back a little bit, so you might not get your full funding, but at least you'll get some, so.
If you don't ask, you don't get, so.
That's right.
That's right. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? I've got a motion and a second to approve the chair's signature on the letter of support. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carried, three in favor, Commissioner DeSanto voted no. That concludes our discussion relative to Mystic Road at the present time. It may come back around for a discussion when we get back here to item, well, on item 16, I guess, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to take a five-minute break.
Second. Got a motion, a second for a five-minute break, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Take a motion to come back into session?
So, move.
Got a motion from Commissioner LaCroy, second from Commissioner DeSanto, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Good morning.
Good morning. Stephanie Jansen, Planner One. Item A is Layout Plan LPL 2033 for applicants David and Luan Hints to combine lots and create Lot 1R Block 11 of the ranch at Black Gap subdivision. The applicants are combining the lots to increase lot size. Existing Lot 1 is .5 acres and vacant, and existing Lot 2 is .63 acres and contains a single-family residence. Both lots are zone plan unit development, accesses off of Nightwind Court. There is no special flood hazard area. Proposed Lot 1R would have 1.13 acres, zone plan unit development, and contain a single-family residence. Staff finds no significant issues with applicant's request as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area. Staff does recommend approval of Layout Plan LPL 2033 with conditions.
Move to approve. Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ross Connect, second by Commissioner LaCroy to approve further discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next time.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Muller, Planning Director. The next item is Minor Plaid, MPL 20-34. The applicant's agent has requested to subdivide one lot to create lots 4A and 4B of the Tigerville subdivision. As the property exists today, it is a low-density residential district. It consists of 6.20, or, excuse me, 6.02 acres, which it was actually 6.52 acres. The plot contains a lot size error. There is no special flood hazard area on this property. There is a double-wide mobile home and some outbuildings on this property. What the applicant is requesting is proposed Lot A, 4A and 4B. They would be zone low-density residential district. One would consist of 3.5 acres and the other 3.02 acres, which meets the minimum lot size requirements for a low-density residential district. This was routed through the internal departmental review process, no items of concern came back. The Board of Commissioners did approve Layout Plan LPL 20-22 on September 1st, 2020 for this request. In addition, on that date, on September 1st, the Board of Adjustment did approve subdivision regulation variances to improve Tigerville Road and for the supplemental percolation and profile hole information. Staff is recommending approval of this minor plot with conditions.
Move for approval. I've got a motion from Commissioner DeSanto.
I'll suck that.
Second from Commissioner Ross Connect to approve the seven conditions, further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C.
Item C is the recommendation from the Planning Commission to form a committee to address infrastructure and road improvements in the county. This request was presented to the Planning Commission because of conversations during some meetings from the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners over concerns over roads and road improvements in the county and development that has been occurring of late and how to prioritize and address some of those concerns that the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners have had. This advisory committee would review current road infrastructure and determine areas that need improvement, like widening, surfacing, et cetera, to better serve future development. In addition to that, some of the goals that the committee could look at are collectively contribute to the improvement of the infrastructure, operations and maintenance, and policies relating to roads in Pennington County. Currently, the Planning Department doesn't have any formal road plans or areas that we see for potential road improvements. As we get development requests, we kind of address them in bits and pieces at a time instead of the overall area. So, we're hoping that this type of committee could look at some areas where we project or see future development, how we can address that through the planning process with the help of the highway department, and look at different things, areas that we may not want to give subdivision regulation variances to reduce risks because we anticipate future development in those areas, and just look at prioritizing funds, areas, different things like that where we anticipate development.
So, Brittany, I know that you was in a part of the conversation, I don't know if you were here for the entire conversation on Mystic Road, but from the discussion that you heard there, is that the type of thing that you would propose be under this advisory committee also then, from our discussions this morning?
Yes, I believe that would fall under like the maintenance areas of those. I think that there's some areas in the county where we're seeing development, seeing impacts from other types of uses, whether it be recreation, tourism, things like that. As things develop out, you may see more areas that develop out into recreational areas, recreational resorts, that you will get those kinds of impacts on those roads that, you know, maybe working with the highway department right now and the planning department, we don't have a, necessarily a plan in place to look at those kinds of things cohesively, making recommendations to this board and the Planning Commission about areas that we see as concerns, citizens see as concerns, making recommendations also as far as, you know, when development does come up, do we, you know, look at not supporting some of the variances because we anticipate future development, so then that way going back, we're not trying to upgrade things in, that were done in the past to move forward in the future.
So, if we pass this, then are you looking at bringing suggestions back to us for that, who would be on that advisory committee?
Correct, and I think that was a concern with the Planning Commission, they wanted to see kind of who would be on that. I think, starting in the beginning, we need to have some kind of visioning statement, some goals and some objectives to bring to the Planning Commission and to the Board of what we see as this committee providing and doing for the county.
And do you see that this advisory committee then would operate under the auspices of the Planning Department? Or how do you, how do you see that?
In, as far as.
Planning Department, Planning Commission, is that what you're, is that what you're looking at as far as who's going to have that responsibility of, who's the advisory committee reporting to?
In my opinion, it should report to the Planning Commission, that they would bring those recommendations to the Planning Commission, because the Planning Commission is a recommending body to you through that process. I think we already have that process in place, so I think the advisory committee and group going in front of the Planning Commission, then they can vet out some of those things and then make recommendations to this board.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner LaCroy first, and then Commissioner Ross Connect.
I just want to give a shout out to the Planning Commission, because, you know, as Commissioners, we serve every, once every three months or something like that, but on my last month of service there, the Planning Commission had time. the Planning Commission had talked about, uh, future uses of some, some roads that they had concerns about, and so I think this fits into, along with the Mystic Road and some of the other stuff that we've done, and it, I think it's great insight for the future of our county, so we can get a roadmap, just like our future land use of what we'd like to see expected done, or they could handle some of these other problems that we're having. So I, I just wanted to give a shout out to the Planning Commission and to you guys, uh, for, for bringing this forward, because I think it's, uh, long time needed.
Commissioner Roskinak.
I guess my question was, Brittany, this won't create any other employment, additional employment, employees or part-time employees, this'll, we'll just keep our same staff?
Correct, um, I see this as representatives from the Planning Commission, um, from the Highway Department, uh, maybe bringing in some other experts or, you know, things, uh, citizens, uh, members of the Board and the Planning Commission, and doing that, I think, once you get people together and kind of get that visioning and that, those goals and objectives put together, I think there'll be a better roadmap of, um, how that is moving forward.
How does the Planning Commission get, uh, reimbursed? My understanding, they get a flat thirty, forty dollars a meeting, so if this is an additional, uh, part of the, their responsibility, is there some, a method in place that they get reimbursed for their time?
Um, there is, they get reimbursed through their mileage reimbursements, um, things like that. I would have to check with the bylaws, but I think that they are paid per planning scheduled hearing meeting.
Well, if they spend a lot of time on it, I'd just like to make sure that we addressed their compensation, so it's fair.
So Brittany, you're looking at this as being a long-term advisory committee, not a short-term of taking care of issues that we have right now, but something that's ongoing for, for a long period of time possibly.
I do, because I believe that there are some concerns that need to be addressed, and I don't think that there are concerns that'll be quickly, uh, addressed, and I think that too, moving forward when we look at, and I, I guess my budget doesn't have that, but Joe's budget does, you know, some areas that we may have to allocate other funds for improvements. Um, you know, other jurisdictions and, you know, you hate to say this word, but you know, there are other jurisdictions and other places that do impact fees and things like that, where they see areas of development and, and things like that, so it kind of helps share with the costs, um, with, you know, developers and, and property owners to get these improvements in place.
True. Joe, obviously is going to impact, have an impact on your department too, thoughts on it?
Um, Brittany approached, I don't know when, couple, two, three, four, five weeks ago, something like that. Um, I think it's a good idea, you know, Old Hill City is a, a prime example where there's development going on there, and, and that's not a very good, you know, it's not a very large road, so it's not going to support a lot of development such as, you know, Mystic that we were just talking about, it's not, you know, there's a lot more subdivisions, so it's, I think it's an avenue to, to get in there and view those, those potential hurdles and, and be upfront with your developers first and foremost and say, hey, if you want to do that sort of subdivision, there's going to be, need to be road improvements, so they can plan that into their process too, instead of coming in thinking they've got a slam dunk, you know, like, uh, Murphy and Short, the, the big subdivision that's being tried to put in down there, um, you know, that developer didn't realize that there was going to, he probably foresaw that, but didn't know to what standards or, or whatnot, so. I, I think it'd be, it's going to be a good avenue to, to hopefully be upfront with some of these developers that are trying to do these big plots and, and grow our area, for the road improvements, not, not only the county needs, but, but they need to, to support their development, so. Um, you know, one that just came to mind is that we had, uh, Murphy Ranch out on Longview. They just did their improvements to Longview to, to further their subdivision, so. It's a good opportunity for the developers in the county to work together.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Questions, yes. Commissioner Roskinak.
What I look at is we're, we're trying to address density. You know, once we get too many lots, we need to make sure we get the infrastructure or the correct infrastructure to support those lots. Is that a safe assessment?
I believe, correct, yes, you know.
Because we're not worried so much about, if there's only three houses in two miles, we're probably not too worried about that, but when we get three hundred houses in two miles, we're gonna, that's gonna be a concern.
Right, you know, the, the average, the, the, the national standard is about nine, nine trips per household, um, is what they, they use, so you take that three hundred times nine, that's thirty-six hundred trips. I think I did that right, right? No, twenty-seven hundred. Math, it's fun. Um, but, uh, yeah, i- i- it's, you're exactly right, looking at those places where there's potential for development, but we, you know, the county can't go in there and develop the, those roads for the developers, they need to, to develop our infrastructure along with their subdivisions.
So then, existing roads, I'm just taking the Mystic because that rings a bell, but the Mystic Road, uh, we would look at the number of residents that use that road, and I counted in eighty-one, but I, then we'd want to make sure that that infrastructure was adequate to support the eighty-one parcels, whether somebody lives there or not, is that a safe assessment?
Um, I would say yes, but you'd also have to look at future land use, you know, what, what could they subdivide those parcels down to? Um, I think that's some of the things that we're seeing in the county now, as these larger parcels are being subdivided and subdivided and subdivided down, um, just like the one on Old Hill City Road, you know, that was subdivided at one point down to three or four larger parcels, now it's going down to fifteen. Um, I think we're going to continue to see that, um, some of that zoning that's going to allow those smaller, um, lot sizes, looking at that future land use in those areas are going to be, um, important.
I'd certainly like to be part of that committee because, you know, you can get on Rapid Map and you can see these hundred and sixty-acre surveys that someday somebody's going to buy it and they're going to want forties, and then the forties are going to be tens, and the tens are going to be threes, so. Uh, and the Ford Ranch is what rings the bell, that's adjacent to the one that Buzz is doing right now. And I don't foresee them ever subdividing it, but they're not going to live forever, somebody else is going to buy it, so I think we're on the right track, and I'd certainly like to be on that committee when the committee's formed.
He asked for it.
I'll second that.
Further questions, Brittany or Joe?
I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Roskinak, second by Commissioner La Croix, uh, to form the advisory committees to address infrastructure and road improvements in the county. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Holly Hennies, I have you up.
Commissioners, what you have in front of you today is a draft of a, a letter of support for a land acquisition, um, with the Forest Service, and, uh, the District Ranger, Mr. Gubels is here, if you would like to, um, ask him any questions about that, he'd be more than happy to address the board.
Jim Gubels, why don't you come forward? If you could give us a, a brief, uh, statement relative to what we're doing here?
Okay, I'll do that. Um, first of all, thank you for the time on your, um, busy agenda this morning, and, uh, just like to take a, a few minutes to, um, highlight, uh, really kind of a rare opportunity here in the county, um, to add, uh, a little over seven hundred acres to, um, public ownership in the Black Hills National Forest in the western side of the county. Um, I think in your packet, you saw a map that, uh, kind of depicts the parcels, but you can see the, uh, real checkerboard pattern to the, uh, private parcels that are available there, and, um, I think it's just a real rare opportunity to, um, if you look at that collectively, it covers about four sections of land and would really, um, bring that together into kind of a solid block of ownership within the, uh, the National Forest and, and offer a lot of, uh, benefits, and I'll just mention a few of those with, uh, um, there's some really high-quality, um, elk habitat in these parcels, which would, uh, allow more public hunting, um, more grazing opportunities. Some forest management opportunities, um, on, for the forest with, uh, chances to reduce some more fuel loading, um, improve future growing stock for timber supply on the forest. Uh, more dispersed recreational opportunities, hiking, dispersed camping, ATV, OHV riding, some connectivity with trails and roads, and, uh, some overall reduced land management, um, costs that we deal with, with like running property lines and, and dealing with all those, um, issues with, uh, all that intermixed ownership. And so today, essentially, I'm, I'm trying to, uh, ask for your support in a, in a, um, letter format to support this, um, potential acquisition, it would be done through the Land and Water Conservation Fund, which is, uh, funded primarily from, um, federal offshore gas and oil leases. And, uh, it would be roughly about three point two million dollars of acquisition of that, of that property. And we do have a, um, letter of intent from the landowner at our supervisor's office, uh, in support of this, that they're interested in, uh, this going into, um, the National Forest ownership, um, for the public benefit.
Jim, these parcels are all under one ownership?
They are.
Interesting.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
Yeah, I think it's under a family trust. And, uh, I got a phone call yesterday, I was telling Jim this, from Harold Bees, he's probably one of the largest private landowners in the Black Hills. In fact, his son's a, uh, Custer County Commissioner, or will be. But, uh, Harold said, what do you think about this? Well, I've seen this happen before, because I used to do yellow book appraisals, and, and, uh, and so I told Harold, I said, Harold, your grandkids and their grandkids and their grandkids will have this to enjoy, uh, once it goes public, and Harold said, well, I just want you to know I'm in support of it, so I told him I'd pass it on the day.
Thank you.
Very good.
I would move to approve.
Second.
We got a motion to approve and a second, uh, Scott Guffey.
I'd just say I, I want to, uh, express my support for this, this acquisition as well, we've, we've worked with actually the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation and the Forest Service to, uh, for the last five years on our Oxide Daisy Project to control noxious weeds up there. It's a beautiful, beautiful country up there, um, and it's in the far western part of the county. It should be preserved, not million-dollar vacation homes put on it, it should have elk and cattle grazing on it.
Very good, thanks, Scott.
Mr. Chairman.
So, hold on a second, so Jim, this doesn't actually connect to the Wyoming border, does it, but it's just close to it?
No, it's close to it, it's about thirty-five miles, um, west of Rapid City here, but I don't believe it connects to the border.
It's probably five miles from the Wyoming line.
Okay, okay, very good, Commissioner La Croix.
I, I just wanted to make the statement that this is a fantastic thing that this family's willing to do, uh, and it's going to be, I think, I really appreciate their movement forward with this, and, and it's gonna, you guys are going to take very good care of it, and I think that's why they're, they're doing it, and they should be proud, appreciate their stepping up with this, thanks.
Thank you.
Any others here to, uh, um, visit with us about this item? Seeing none, I've got a motion from Commissioner DeSanto and a second from Commissioner La Croix, uh, to approve the chair's signature on this, uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, and thank you, Commissioners.
Yep, yep.
Okay, next item, Holly.
Next item in front of you, Commissioners, is a motion to acknowledge the resignation of Planning Commissioner Travis Lassiter, um, to be effective after the December twenty-first, twenty-twenty Planning Commission meeting. Um, and this is due to Mr. Lassiter being elected as the new District Forward County Commissioner. So we just need a motion to acknowledge that resignation so we can file with his warrant, and I will open the Planning Commissioner position according to policy and seek interested candidates.
Move to approve his resignation.
Got a motion from Commissioner DeSanto, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Roskinak, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. So Holly, we don't, as I understand it, then we don't need to make a motion for, you'll just follow policy and go ahead and advertise for that position.
Correct, unless the Board has a different preference on how they would like to appoint, I will just simply follow forward and open the advertisement.
Okay. Uh, my question, uh, would, would the last time there was a review or, uh, folks were interviewed, and they had good credentials, and one of them didn't make the list, is, we go back to that list, is that how it?
We have not in the past.
Totally, totally everything, start from scratch.
Start from scratch, yes, sir.
That was my question.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next item, um, Holly Hennies.
Yes.
Request for an FTE.
This item is a request for a new FTE to be created in the Commission Office. Um, currently, you have two full-time employees in the office, this is a request to create a third as an administrative assistant. Um, I've outlined information in the memo, I'd be certainly happy to stand for any questions that the Board may have.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Commissioner La Croix first, and Commissioner DeSanto.
I appreciate what you, what you've done, Holly, here with this outline, because I've had the opportunity to, uh, visit with Minnehaha and work with, uh, the Mayor's Office, some of their staff on some different committees also, and so, I've got to see the makeup of those. Um, I have to admit, you know, this is why during, uh, your review process, I'd asked about, uh, the help, because I've, I've seen the load in our Commission Office and how you guys have stepped up not only in this crisis of this year, uh, of handling this and working with all these departments, it's just been outstanding, but I think, I think our Commission is going to be burdened even more in the future. And with a lot of different stuff, I mean, you just had, we just had one, we're going to start up, uh, for infrastructure and so forth, and I think it's very important that we be able to give that time and, and commitment, and you guys are here full-time. As Commissioners, we're, we're here part-time or as much as you ask us to be here, you know, on our part, but we really depend on Joan and you to do the day-to-day stuff and on the department heads from other areas, so. I actually, I'm really in support of this, for the simple fact that I think we do, are going to have some heavy projects coming up, and we're going to need some full attention from you two, and we need to alleviate some of the load so we can get, uh, that full commitment.
Thank you.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Um, I would just reflect Lloyd's sentiments as well, I've, I've watched how hard you guys work, I see how much, I think one of the biggest things that I see is how much you help other departments. Taking time away from your commitments here in, in our office to help out in, I think, every department that there is in, in the county, it seems like, so. Um, I would, I would support this additional FTE for the County Commission.
Thank you. I think the time has come that we, you know, when you're, this is coming down the pipeline, I would like to see this person cross-train maybe with some of the other departments, you know, just so she knows a little, or they know a little bit about the Auditor's Office, a little bit about the Treasurer's Office, so. And then, you know, but, uh, you know, they'd be based in our manager's office, but, uh, I think it's a bold step going forward.
Yeah, thank you for that.
And I'm thoroughly in support of it.
I have had conversations with Janet, Treasurer Sailor, um, if there's something that we can do with that position to help with the incoming mail, um, this posi- this person would sort the incoming mail, and it doesn't make sense that they would have to handle it twice upstairs if there's something that this person can do to help Janet.
Exactly.
Before it gets up there, so we're definitely looking at other options that, that this person can help in other ways.
Sure.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Just one additional thing, I, I just, um, I know through my observation of, of Holly and, and the way she manages the office, that nobody's just going to be sitting around doing nothing. So.
Holly, I, um, I, I agree with everything that's been said here. And I know from checking with other counties, um, other entities that have some operations sort of like ours, that, uh, have some operations sort of like ours, that, uh, we are not staffed anywhere near to the degree that most of these are. And, um, I, I think this year probably brought to light, at least to me and maybe the rest of the Commissioners, of how much you do for other departments, uh, within the building too, and, um, in the leadership that you've provided during that period of time. So, uh, there's a lot of things to do in the office. There's, it's only gonna get to be more in the future. I think this is a good move at this point in time to bring on an additional person. Um, at the same time, um, I'm not sure how the mail became part of the responsibility of the commission office. Uh, and maybe that's where it belongs, but I think we also need going further in the future. We need to look to see if there are things that would be more appropriate someplace else, uh, in order to free up some time, because, uh, you may be adding a person for forty hours a week, uh, there's many more hours of that that's actually needed, so I fully support this move.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Got a motion by Commissioner LaCroy, second by Commissioner Ross Connect. Uh, further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Do they need that writ completely out, or are you guys okay with? You know, the A thirteen?
That's the motion.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Items from the, uh, commission members.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
The only one I have is I attended, uh, the Youth City Council meeting last Tuesday, and it was, uh, very enlightening on, on some of the stuff that they took up. You know, they took up the, the homeless, homelessness, uh, problems that's happening in our community, and they also took up, uh, did a resolution on the, the hen policy, which I've seen last night was, was suspended at the city council. They had given a recommendation. But they also had discussions, uh, related to that land trade where they sent out a recommendation at the city council too. Uh, so, uh, I think the, the Youth City Council is doing a very good job of moving forward and really getting comfortable. And I think Wednesday, the fourth, we're looking at doing, uh, going over applications as some move out, and we got applications for more youth that want to come on to replace those, so I'll be in those interviewing processes on Wednesday. Otherwise, that's all I have. I didn't have any other meetings for the rest of the week either.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I had a last-minute situation come up that prevented me from getting to my committee meetings on Monday, so I have nothing to report right now.
Okay. Commissioner Ross Connect.
Uh, only thing that I did is Shannon, with the Director of Equalization's Office, uh, invited me to a meeting here, oh, a few days ago, and we heard from Dean Hedrick, he's with Holt Homes. He's building, uh, for Bozma, I believe, out in Buckholder. So, they're trying to, uh, build these homes as fast as they can. Uh, their impediments would be the construction cost and lack of getting, uh, cabinets and door knobs and garage doors. He said he can build a home, or his company can build a home in one-hundred-and-three days, and these homes that were, you know, priced at two-forty, he said, no, they're, you know, they could be two-sixty-five. So, I guess the question was to Shannon's group, how do we assess these? Uh, is there gonna be, uh, from appraisal standpoint, is it a artificial market there somewhere? Is it a false market? Uh, and I, my question would be, well, okay, it's, you know, they went into this with, uh, thinking they're gonna pay two-forty and they get a loan for two-sixty-five or seventy percent of that. Their income isn't going up, so I just, uh, I see some risks there because if, until you can support these prices, even though the costs are going up, it's a concern and, and hopefully it's gonna be tough for Shannon and his group to uh, make sure that they, when these things sell, and they're selling like hotcakes, that they, uh, they're assessed properly. So, it was a good meeting. Uh, very informative. They're, they're ramping up for the B-twenty-one. I guess the first B-twenty-one's set the, be at Ellsworth around, uh, two thousand twenty-three, but roughly two-hundred personnel are coming in every three months, uh, in, in support of the program. So, that was the only meeting that I went to.
Two, two-hundred?
Two-hundred every three months.
Every three months.
Starting. What's that? Starting first of next year?
It's, it's already going.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Excuse me.
No, no. Okay, couple items. Um, I did attend the, uh, the chamber board meeting and, uh, you know, Elevate is the umbrella over the top of, uh, the chamber, so they're still working through, uh, actually how they move forward with, uh, the various things under that umbrella. And, uh, if you look at what Elevate is doing, and I, hopefully Elevate has been providing each of you with, uh, update as to uh, different things that, that are going on in our area, and, uh, they have some very positive things, uh, happening for, for the entire area, not only just Rapid City and Pennington County, but, uh, Need County and beyond. So, uh, they're, they're really, they're really working hard and, uh, trying to develop some, some good business opportunities, uh, for our area. Uh, also, uh, the chair and I attended the Big Five meeting on Thursday, which is, includes the, uh, city, the school district, the county, School of Mines and Technology, and the, uh, Western Dakota Tech. And a lot of that discussion was relative to what was happening in their particular instances relative to COVID-nineteen. Obviously, things change on a daily basis with that. Uh, as of Thursday, the public school system wasn't in the position they are today, where I think they've announced that they, as of tomorrow, they're going to all virtual. Um, again, in, in, for the Rapid City School District. So, uh, it's, it's just a never-changing, uh, type thing. So, uh, we did talk about, uh, s- some other things, but they're, they're basically ongoing programs, nothing of a critical nature. So I'll just leave it at that. Anything else as far as from, uh, Commissioners?
I got one more item.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Out the float.
You're the last one I expected to stop.
How did the float go? The, the greater
the
white Christmas, or nothing's greater than a white Christmas?
The float decorating went amazing on Saturday. Um, I wanna say ten county employees and various family members were there. Um, we wrapped up about three, three-thirty. Biggest float we've attempted. It, it looks amazing.
So did my Christmas lights work?
What's that?
Did my Christmas lights work?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, and we thank everybody for the donations. We use more lights than we ever have. Um, Highway actually switched the trucks. They are using one of the brand-new trucks that hasn't been put into service yet, so get to showcase one of their brand-new ones that they've gotten and, um, yeah, it's gonna be amazing.
What did they use to generate the electricity for the lights?
We have one generator that's on the back, mounted on the trailer, um, that's powering all the lights on the back end, and then Commissioner DeSanto donated, not donated, let us borrow his generator. Let us borrow his generator that's powering the lights that are on the, the truck itself.
Nice.
And the music. If we can get the music to work.
Tell Joe to bolt that, that compressor down good that DeSanto gave it, and weld, weld it on there.
It's, that thing is strapped down. It's not going anywhere. Yeah, I'm missing a cable for the, uh, sound system, so I need to go try and find one of those yet this week.
What is that? What type of cable are you looking for?
I have no idea, honestly. Um, I borrowed it from the fairgrounds and it's, yeah.
So for your information, Hill City Chamber's putting on a parade, uh, the evening of twenty-seventh, and I'm gonna enter my fire truck, and it's gonna be well-lit, so.
Awesome.
You wanna come up to Hill City? Uh, it's a good parade. Wally normally cooks chest, uh, chestnuts out in front of the alpines, so you're all invited to that little gathering, twenty-seventh, uh, the evening day after Thanksgiving.
Great. I think our float is sixty-six feet long and fourteen feet tall. We are right at the max of what we can do, so.
That's huge.
And, and I have to say, you guys, Holly done a good job organizing it and all you guys working on that to bring, this is the third year that this has gone on, and I stopped out there. I wasn't able to stay and help, but they were all over that place and, and you know, that stuff was greased up pretty good too on that grater, so you got, some people got a little bit of grease on them too, but uh, Barry had his kids out there and they were having a good time. But, uh, I think it would have been a little bit better turnout of
If COVID.
COVID wasn't here, you know? Because they, they do, the whole intent of it was to kind of make a, a a, a social event out of it and a family thing, and, and with this year it's a little bit difficult, but man, that thing's huge. It's, it's gonna be.
Joe's really worried how we're gonna top it next year. Cause it's probably the biggest piece of equipment we have, so we'll see.
So how do those all get taken down then?
Staff. We'll, we'll go and roll them up and put them away for next year.
Yep. I wanted to make it, but I couldn't, but I appreciate the.
We appreciate the donations and the help everybody gave.
Absolutely.
Okay, item twenty is the vouchers. I need a motion to approve the vouchers totaling three million, three-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-four dollars and six cents. Oh, oh.
Move to approve with Munson Jeffries.
Sorry, Commissioners. John Moro, uh, I need to ask you to, um, not submit payment or approve payment for the one from the independent insurance agents of Rapid City.
Well, that's included in there?
That's included in there. So it was put in in packet.
Okay.
Um, we are gonna wait, uh, we're waiting for one more bid, if you will, on the insurance premiums.
Okay. So that'll, that'll, that'll reduce the amount of vouchers by about two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the vouchers without the payment to Liberty Mutual.
IA.
IA?
IARC.
IARC. Okay.
Plus, plus with the Jeffrey Munson one?
That's already added in.
That's already added in, okay. So move.
Got a motion to approve the vouchers. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner, uh, DeSanto. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Need a motion for executive session, and this will include not only personnel issues, but contractual and legal.
Move to go into executive session.
Got a motion from Commissioner DeSanto. Is there a second?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, items from the public, please. Need to make sure we call for that.
I'm sorry, John?
Sarah?
Any id, anybody here that, uh, items from the public? Seeing none, we'll go on to, uh, needing the motion for the executive session, and I have that from Commissioner DeSanto, and did I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner LaCroy. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Need a motion?
Move to come out of executive session.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to come out of executive session. Commissioner DeSanto and Commissioner LaCroy. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. John?
Commissioners, John Moro, Pennington County Human Resources, so I've got three motions I'll be making, um, on the behalf of the, the sheriff's office. Um, the first one is to approve a one percent salary increase for twenty-twenty-one as outlined in the memo that was in your packets, or, excuse me, in the executive session packets, um, for Dr. Roger Beilild, Dr. Nathan Long, Rachel Waddell, and Michelle Marer, um, starting effective with the December twenty-seventh pay period.
Got a motion?
Move for approval.
Commissioner LaCroy, is there a second?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Ross Connect. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next motion is to approve back pay for administrative assistant Mark Hirsch at a difference of fifty-two cents an hour as of August ninth for a total cost of two-hundred-and-eight dollars.
Is there a motion?
Approval.
Got a motion from Commissioner DeSanto. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner LaCroy. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioners. The third and final motion is to approve back pay for teacher James Kale at a difference of a dollar fifty-eight an hour for three pay periods starting effective September sixth through October seventeenth for a total cost of one forty-two twenty.
Move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion from Commissioner DeSanto, second from Commissioner LaCroy. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Move to adjourn?
Got a motion to adjourn from Commissioner LaCroy, second from Commissioner DeSanto. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We're done.
Everybody have a great Thanksgiving.